Father was so thankful during this time, during time of Thanksgiving, all the blessings that you give us in our lives. We ask that you continue to keep our county safe and let us prosper and grow and that we continue to be, show unity and put you first and foremost in our lives. We especially ask that you be with our zoning officer, Tim Seals, at this time as he is going through this time of surgery, that you can give him the healing and the recovery time that he needs. But most of all, we thank you for your son, Jesus, in his name. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Our last few meetings, it's been quite a time before we got into our meeting. And I would like to move that the citizens' comments that are on what we got on the agenda, that we hear them up front, if they're not on the agenda, I'd like to move that to the end of the meeting so we can spend some of the business.
Yes, and you're making that in form of a motion?
I'm making it in form of a motion.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Okay, we have a proper motion, have a second.
Any discussion on that?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I spoke with the county attorney on the way over here and updated him on our situation. And he said that the developers did have the right to withdraw their request, but I asked him if this body needed to take an action since it did appear on our agenda and was advertised. And he had talked about plat approvals, I believe it's 60 days. So he said...
Can you answer my phone?
I am using my microphone.
Can we shut those doors, please?
Barely. Todd, shut the door.
So he had advised that we, that this body could go ahead and take the action of denying the agenda item. This is just a procedural matter and the developer has every right to come back with their new, with a submittal, with their new survey. So I would advise that this body do that so that there's no legal maneuver that could come back on the county.
Okay.
And that advice came from the county attorney.
He advised that we could, but did not have to, correct?
He advised that we should.
It should, okay. Now, I just want to bring this up in conversation because if we look at past practice, and we've had that over the last 18 months, when an item has been withdrawn from the agenda, we have not allowed citizens' input and we've not addressed that item at all. So if we take action tonight, is any of, we're going to face any recourse from what previous action has taken place in our previous meetings? Because it has happened that we've not allowed citizens' input if an item has been withdrawn from the agenda and we've moved on with business. And in my opinion, since this is still open for discussion, we have a lot of other business on the agenda that we've been trying to get to for months. So that's just my two cents on the thing. If it's not here and they can come back and they can do those things, but we do not need to hear citizens' input tonight, in my opinion. And I'm sorry, folks, I'll address the crowd now. I know you've come and I know you want to talk and we've been receiving emails and text messages and stuff for the last two weeks and I know everybody is concerned about things. But nothing other than what Mr. Brooks has said can be done tonight. They still have a right to come back, they have, you know, the opportunity to refile that. So it's all for naught in spending time with it tonight, in my opinion. So we have a proper motion, the second, is there any more discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I feel the citizens have the right to speak. Just, that's my discussion.
We're not going to have applause, we're not going to do that. And we're here to conduct a meeting and we've had the courtroom this floor before over other matters in the last 18 months. And we've not allowed it then and we're not going to allow it now. And I don't want to break past precedence on that.
Well, I'm not talking about precedence, I'm talking about where we're at legally with the situation and the advice from the county attorney.
Okay. So we have a proper motion and a proper second. Are you wanting to amend his motion? Are you wanting, what do you want to do?
Well, I'm not, I don't need to amend it, I'm just not going to vote for it.
Not going to vote for it. Is there any more discussion, Terry? Yeah. Okay, John, would you restate your motion, please?
My motion is that I'm not trying to impact their comments, I'm just saying, based on our last few meetings, we're getting to where we're not conducting business enough. It's an hour and a half before we get into it. So anything that's on the agenda, they can come forth, anything that's not on the agenda to be acted upon tonight, then they can comment at the end of the meeting when we get the rest of the business done. That's all I'm requesting.
Okay.
So that we can conduct the other business.
There is something I would like to add to my comment. I have had phone calls from some of your neighbors, some of the citizens of that community this week, and I told them we were not going to have citizens' input after, that was actually the day after I got the phone call, it had been removed. They've not showed up. They hadn't come. They were not coming. So there's already folks that was wanting to speak, was prepared to speak, had been told no and that deferred them from coming.
I'd like to make the point, Mr. Chairman, the agenda that was sent to each of the planning commissioners, the agenda that was advertised in the paper, did include the Jim Henry business item. So the fact that people are here to speak on it makes perfect sense and I think a small one has a comment.
Ms. Baldwin?
Your county attorney is correct. If a plat is presented in good standing and is not acted on within 60 days, it is automatically approved. I just checked the minutes and in the last meeting, it was deferred.
To this meeting?
To this meeting.
Yeah.
And so, but that counts as 30 days.
Right.
I would move it to the beginning of the agenda and deny it without prejudice. That action, actions of denial unless they resubmit and they can resubmit. There are certain things in state law that if you take action on it, it can't be brought back up for a year. This is not one of those. So if you deny it without prejudice, they can bring it up when they get ready.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Was the plat that was presented at the previous meeting the same plat that was presented this time or were there changes?
The same.
It's exactly the same. No changes were made.
No, there were changes.
Were changes made, that's what I was thinking. So this is really not the same plat that we saw last time. This is a different plat because I think based on your recommendations, Catherine and I aren't mistaken, that was presented to the surveyor. I was thinking that they made changes based upon your recommendations.
Regardless, a plat has been submitted and this body has 60 days to take action. Is that correct, Ms. Baldwin? And the county attorney has advised that an action of some sort should be taken. Ms. Baldwin's given a pretty good advice on, because we don't know when they're going to come back to resubmit.
And they may never.
But that's their prerogative.
If they never, you've taken no action on it and then you run up against that 60 days.
So this is on the agenda and I think some form of action needs to be taken.
But it's a different plat.
That doesn't matter. A plat has been presented.
I know. The way I'm looking at it is that you're counting last month as part of the 60 days.
Okay, 60 days from now, what difference does it make, Terry?
Well, all I'm saying is, is that this plat, to me now, has 60 days.
Sure.
To be resubmitted or...
No, no, it has 60 days for this body to take action.
Take action.
And we can take action on it right here tonight.
Well, so even if the owner were here and he said, "I don't want you to take action", you still have to take action?
Yes. I have placed things on this...
Let me have seen people here, stand here at this meeting right before us and pull that right in front of us and let's take no action on it.
Let me ask a question. We're talking about taking an action on the previous plat?
No, the action on the item that's presented on the agenda.
But it's not the same thing that we deferred. It's new.
I would state that I reviewed this last time and I gave them comments for corrections. If their surveyor made those corrections, which I assume is what he did, then it is the same plat as corrected to meet the criteria based on the last meeting.
Okay.
So, I mean, I don't see it as a, I don't see it as a different plat.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor right now. It's been seconded, we've had a lot of discussion about other things other than that motion. John, I'm going to ask you one more time to restate that, that way everybody knows what they're voting on and then we'll get on to what Austin's talking about.
Okay.
What John is discussing is purely the citizens' input.
Citizens' input, I'd like for us to take, if it's on the agenda, going forward, comment it at the meeting. If it is not on the agenda and somebody wishes to address an issue with us that they want to address, that it be moved to the end of the meeting to address if it's not on the agenda.
I keep coming back to the...
And we have removed that item from the agenda, but we can still...
We have not removed it.
They have.
They have asked to have it withdrawn.
If we ever denied somebody...
Has that, has that happened in writing, Stephanie, or was that just done over the phone?
It was over the phone.
Okay. So that's another thing that the county attorney talked about, because there's not a paper trail on it, that he does advise that something be done with the item. Because if we just sit on our hands for 60 days from now, that plat could go into effect. And this doesn't, this doesn't really affect the developer whatsoever because they have asked to withdraw it, so us denying it without prejudice is basically us agreeing with the developer, like we're going to clean the slate and then they can come back at a later date if they so choose.
Do you have that in writing from our county attorney?
No, I got it over the phone.
And we're right back to where we are with asking it to be removed from the agenda. It's the same, same circumstance?
No, it's not the same circumstance.
Both are over the phone.
No, I'm an elected official of the county and I spoke to the county attorney.
This employee at the county and they called and asked her to remove it.
But...
Are you the same person they would speak with to have it put on the agenda?
Yes.
We're spinning in circles here.
Absolutely. And I would like to look at what John's motion is. And then if you want to bring that up under the advisement of the county attorney, it's going to be postponed and we're not, or not postponed, but denied. You can do that after we vote.
But that means the item's still on the agenda, so that makes John Neal's motion irrelevant.
So we're done?
No.
Well, I mean... Because it's not specific to that thing, Austin.
Okay.
You're missing the point.
I'm just saying, the agenda I have...
You all can decide if it's on the agenda later.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so everybody knows what they're voting for. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Most passes? Okay, now, let's talk about what the county attorney told you. I want you to go through it all again, the conversation you had in Shedd's.
I talked to the county attorney about another matter and I said, "Are you aware of what's going on with the business item with the sheds tonight?" And he said, "I'm not very familiar with it, he hasn't been involved with it." And I said, "They have a plat that they brought last month, we took action on that business item, deferred it to this month, they have since asked it to be withdrawn." And he said, "They have the right to do that." And I said, "Does this body, the planning commission, need to take action on the item since it has been on the agenda and been advertised?" And I said, "My concern is that because of the 60-day rule, that if we don't take action tonight, 60 days from now, if we don't take any action for 60 days, that that plat would be basically, it would basically be consent from this body by not taking action." So he suggested that we take action on the item and we could deny, and Ms. Baldwin has spoken that we could deny without prejudice, that way there's no legal maneuver on the part of the developer. So we're just trying to wipe the slate clean.
And they can come back with...
Absolutely.
With your plat, do everything in 60 days, okay? Do we have other citizens' input other than the sheds?
You got it, you got it.
Are they separated out together?
Mr. Chairman, do you want to approve the minutes first?
In just a minute, I'm going to look at this and we'll move forward. That's, I think you all started the meeting without me. When I come in, it was done going.
It might have started a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah. Do we have other citizens' input other than the sheds?
You got it, you got it.
Are they separated out together?
Mr. Chairman, do you want to approve the minutes first?
In just a minute, I'm going to look at this and we'll move forward. That's, I think you all started the meeting without me. When I come in, it was done going.
It might have started a couple of weeks ago.
I trust that you received your packets and had the opportunity to look at the minutes from last month's meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to that? Being known, I'm looking for a motion to approve those.
Second.
Proper motion, the second, any discussion? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Now, Austin, back to what you were discussing. You're going to make a motion to deny without prejudice on that, correct?
Yeah, that would be Agenda Item C.
Yeah, since we entered into discussion about that before we even approved the minutes, so I want to go ahead and talk about something because we're at the citizens' input.
Okay.
Could you just speak a little louder, I can't hear. I can't hear what you're saying.
Okay, sorry. Since we've entered into discussion about this and we're at the point of the citizens' input, and I may be out of line by asking this question, but I'm going to address the citizens at this point in time. Is there anyone here in favor of this not being denied without prejudice as our county attorney advised? I said... Pardon me?
What's the double negative?
Go ahead, Austin.
I think the chairman meant, is anyone opposed to denying Item C with prejudice and understanding that this is just procedural? This doesn't really change anything, we're just wiping the slate clean because this item has been requested to be withdrawn.
That's like a restart.
Maybe, yeah.
That's exactly what it is and that's their right to do that.
Is that restarting the 60 days?
No, that stops the clock and they would have to come back and resubmit, they would have to start over. When they have the right to do that, even if we take this action tonight that I'm suggesting.
This keeps it from being automatically approved.
Yes, that's correct. That's correct. So is there anyone here to speak in favor of the sheds?
No.
Okay, okay, that's what I'm getting at. So if what, if the outcome you're wanting with what they've submitted is for it to be denied.
Correct.
Okay, and that's what we're talking about right here. I'm asking parliamentarily, John, do you, is there anything out of line in us doing this?
No. No, you can't. The board has the right to do it.
Right. Are you agreeing with me?
I didn't say that. I know it's the holidays and everything, but I didn't say that. But parliamentarily, you're within your right to do so.
Is it, do we need a motion to move this item out of new business before we start new business or is this part of new business before the citizens' input?
Well, I probably would ask, if you being chairman, I probably would ask, if we were to not deny this, does everybody need to come speak?
That's what I'm getting toward.
Okay.
That's, I'm inching that direction. Does anybody else have any comment or instruction on that?
I would just make the comment that the action I am proposing doesn't really change the situation much. This just protects the county from a law that would allow a plat to go into effect 60 days without action. So I don't want that to happen and upon legal counsel from the county attorney, he has advised this body, take that action.
Okay.
But if you're here to talk about the issue, we're not really going to accomplish much on the issue, other than we're going to make sure there's no legal maneuvers after this meeting tonight.
And if they file it again, you would have the opportunity to come back and speak at that point in time when they are present.
Now, these sheds, Catherine, anybody taking pictures of these sheds over here?
Sir, we've seen all that stuff, we've actually had employees of the county out and looked at that. And we're not going to get in the weeds on that right now, we're just talking about this issue. They can refile, even though we deny, and you would have the opportunity to come back and address the planning commission at that point in time and stuff while they're here. Okay, I'm just, I'm making sure everybody's on the same page and understands that. Tonight, there's not going to be anything else take place with it other than denying it if the planning commission votes to do so.
They're not usable right now, correct?
They're treated as sheds right now.
Yeah, they're sheds.
Livable sheds?
So they should not be occupied, correct?
That is not under our purview.
No.
That's a zoning and building issue, that's not, has nothing to do with us and planning.
No.
From a timing standpoint, do you anticipate a regional planning meeting in December, which I believe would be, I think, the 24th, Christmas Eve?
Have to take action on that.
And I ask that is because certainly I think most citizens might want the opportunity to appear and be present.
We would have to take action on whether to have that meeting or postpone it tonight and if they don't resubmit for that month, if we move that to January, if we don't have the December meeting, then that would move to January and the agenda would be published again like it was this time.
All right, so right now, we don't know.
No.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can the owners keep deferring?
They're not deferring.
They're not deferring. They've withdrawn.
Can they keep withdrawing it until...
If we, everybody, understand this, if the motion is made tonight to deny, what they originally submitted is done. It's over. But they can come back with their amended plat and resubmit at a following meeting, which at that point in time, it would be published again, the agenda would, and you could come and speak. Okay?
Understand, when they submit, they're paying a fee, you know, I wouldn't get, I wouldn't get caught up on that.
Yeah.
They have asked to withdraw, we've been advised to deny without prejudice, to address the business item, and then it's really, it's whatever they want to do from this point on.
So just making sure everybody understands that. So Terry, back to your point, we would need a motion to move that item to the top and then go ahead and address that.
Or you want to get...
I'm addressing Terry right now.
Okay.
That's correct, right?
I would think since we're altering the agenda as far as it goes, and if we're going to put it before other new business and before citizens' input, in other words, to allow these people the opportunity to know that it's taken care of, I just didn't know if we needed a motion to do it.
Okay. Okay, what is the pleasure of the board?
Can we move it before citizens' input? I've never seen that done.
There's a lot going on tonight we've never seen done.
Could we just proceed with citizens' comments and perhaps a lot of you that have filled out, now that you understand and hopefully this has answered some questions?
And what I'm...
If your name is called...
What I'm trying to get to is, if we're going to have it tonight and the only motion's going to be made to deny and they're going to resubmit, are we going to go through another hour, hour and a half of citizens' input the next go around with the same thing that we're going to hear tonight?
I would leave that up to the citizens, Mr. Chairman.
I agree.
Is there a limitation on that, excuse me?
Limitation?
Is there a limitation on the repeat of what we're going through tonight, we're going to keep going and going and going until there's interest?
I don't...
Well, there doesn't appear to be a lack of interest.
Going ahead and doing it anyway, what's to stop them from putting in sewer, or the subject, what's to stop them from putting in water?
Yeah, because obviously, we're supposed to be sheds and they're giant houses.
They've withdrawn their, they've asked to withdraw their plat. We've been advised by the county attorney to deny, and the planner has added to that, to deny without prejudice, to address the business item. So that means that that property is, I believe it's around seven acres, that has one house and two sheds.
Those sheds are bigger than my house.
Guys, listen, we know, but we're getting nowhere with this.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to move that to the next item of business we discuss and address that thing and then you figure out the rest later.
Okay, we have a proper motion, have a second? Do we have any more discussion on that?
So we're, a little clarification. You want to move Item C... You want to move item C just after the approval of the minutes?
When we get, if this is a positive vote, you need to be ready with a motion.
I'm ready.
What the attorney told you, because it's next.
I'm ready.
It's simple as that.
Okay, everybody know what we're voting on. All those in favor of moving item C, that's, you got to have the glasses on, item C to the next item of business, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Item C on the agenda, which has been moved to next item of business, is final plat approval for a three lot subdivision of Jim Henry Road, Dandridge, by Grace Contractors LLC.
Mr. Chairman, since the developer has asked for this to be withdrawn, I make a motion to deny this request without prejudice.
Okay, we have a proper motion, do we have a second?
Let me ask a question, you're denying his request to withdraw it, or you're denying the project?
I'm denying item C without prejudice.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're clear, second.
Okay, I have a motion, second, is there any further discussion?
And it's, and the reason is, is because the owner wanted to pull it, asked to pull it, correct?
That, yes.
That is the reason that is, that we're taking, that, in other words...
That's the reason this action is being taken, yes.
Okay.
And this does not affect their ability to come back in any way.
Okay, so, we're basing it upon the fact that the owner said he wanted to pull it, but yet what we're saying, but the argument is already, has been, if the owner, unless the owner comes in in writing or whatever, do we, does, does he have the, is it pulled?
This is to protect the county, Terry.
I, I, I understand all that, okay, but I'm just saying is that, and I agree, okay, I'm a hundred percent, I just think that when we deny something, that we need to give them a valid reason of why we are denying this plat, and you're saying that the reason we're denying it is, is that because the owner decided to pull it. That's the reason, correct?
The deny.
I don't think so, I think, I think the reason being here is that there's some question about the sixty days.
Right.
Catherine's brought it up, attorney's brought it up, okay, I think that's a valid reason to do it.
Actually, Austin brought it up to the attorney.
So, sixty days, because of the no action within sixty days.
Right.
Okay.
And if we postpone December meeting, of course, it would be passed to sixty days.
To deny a plat?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I think that's the reason.
And they're not here, it's noncompliant to begin with, I mean, you can pick, you could list them all.
Yeah, there's some things wrong with it. There's some things wrong with it.
Okay, any further discussion or questions about the motion, say? Everybody know what we're voting on. All those in favor of denying the plat approval?
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice. And, and the reasoning again, because of the sixty days and them not having representation here tonight for that, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, do we want to just...
I'm thinking that's...
Can we just wait a couple minutes, let this...
I'm going to address the citizens now, has anyone stayed that wanted to speak on the sheds? Yeah. Ma'am, please hold, I'm asking a specific question, we're going to move on with the citizens' input now and things. If anyone has seen here and wanted to comment on that, once at a time, that filled out a form, show your hands. You filled forms out? Okay.
Two minutes, or one line?
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll let...
One line. It'll help you guys. It'll help everybody in this room.
Do you just want to start going through the list?
That's what I'm going to do. Yeah, I think a lot have left, and that's...
I think it's going well.
Oh, it's, yeah, great, great. It's absolutely great.
Are we going to op-ed on chapter?
Okay. Next item on the agenda is citizens' input, Ron C. Felty. You here, sir?
Yep.
Okay, you step the podium, state your name, your address, you have three minutes to speak.
Are we on the sheds or the Isaiah House?
Uh, it's got Isaiah House and sheds, you've got, uh...
So, I got six minutes?
Yeah, you've got three minutes to citizens' input. Good try, though.
Okay, the sheds are ridiculous, they should be...
That's our name and address.
Ron Felty, sixteen twenty Kinder Lane, Dandridge, Tennessee. Okay? The sheds are ridiculous, those aren't sheds, those are housings, and they're, they could put anybody in there. I heard at one time that it was a Christian thing, but everything that's been done there has been not above board. Christians do things above board. They don't hide, they don't sneak, they don't have to, they got the Lord on their side. Those things should be tore down by, with the cost all being on the people who built them. That, that's just wrong what they're doing, and if they change the agenda to try to, now it's a housing or whatever, it should be denied, a hundred percent denied. They should be just run out of town, and all cost should be on them. As far as the trailer park for the Isaiah House, all those kids that are going through there are kids that need help, and you're going to put a trailer park around, and people don't want to jump the fence and be in our playground and stuff, and jeopardize these children, is wrong. That's just wrong. The house was built out away from everything for peace, and now you're going to put a trailer park around the Isaiah House? That's ridiculous. There's no way that should be allowed, no way. That's just wrong, those kids need peace, and they need our love, and they need our help, and to put a trailer park right on top of them, when people be coming in, trying to use the playground and stuff, and knocking on the door, or coming over there, people are not allowed in that house at all, unless they've been through, through, uh, they check them out, they see what they're doing, you, you have, they have, you have to go through the process, make sure that you're good people and stuff, they don't just let anybody in there. I mean, I, I go over there when I have permission, and they need some help or something, but I can't just walk up in there, it's not allowed, and then you're going to put all this chaos around? That should not be allowed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Kim Starr? Kim Starr?
This is my amen corner. I feel like I'm fixing fruits. I'm a volunteer for Isaiah House. It's a wonderful, wonderful organization, it has the scripture, it's taken from scripture, defend the oppressed, take up the cause of the fatherless. I have been there several years. We take these children in because they cannot find a foster home for them. We get babies occasionally, but most of the time, it's older children, because no one wants them. Now, sorry, I get real... We have to make a secure place for them, and the reason they're at Isaiah House is because before Isaiah House, and we're very blessed, and now surrounding counties have followed through, they've got an Isaiah House too. I used to have to go and sit in the office of DCS with these children, because they had no place to go. They'd sleep on a bench, we'd run out and get them something to eat, but that's all we could do. Now, these children come to our house, they get food. What do you want? Well, I've got a gripe about that, because you know what they usually say, McDonald's or something like that, and I, and they all know that I've got this vegetable kit going, but we try to let them know they're welcome, they're loved, I hug on them, and I, and I sing songs to them, to make them feel more comfortable, they have a clean place. They have three new, not used, three new outfits and new shoes, and you know what kind of shoes they want? Well, that's the kind of tennis shoes they get, because someone will go out and purchase them, when they do. Now, we want to keep these children safe, this is not supposed to be a known house, but it is, I think most people in the community in Newmarket knows where it is. So, but we don't want predators or people that are trying to get to their children. These children have been abused, they've been neglected, they've been sexually, they have been trafficked. Now, this plot of land has a division down the center that they don't even own, they own two plots, and then across that section, there's another plot. Now, why would you want a campground there? And it is known that pedophiles frequent campgrounds. We do not want our children exposed to this. We have a fenced, ten yard, wonderful playground, all from donations, it's all from donations. Now, these are troubled kids, sometimes we have runners, they're so traumatized, and it's the first place they've been, they will run. I have stood, if y'all know where the road, it's on, it's not a good road, and I have stood in the road and stopped traffic when we had a runner, until we could get the child back under control. We don't want more traffic on that road. It's a two, a road that two cars could barely get by on. We don't want more traffic down there. And there's all kinds of safety issues with having someone that comes...
Because I'm just letting you know where you're at for three minutes.
Am I, oh my gosh!
I'm going to give you just another second.
Okay, one more thing, twenty-nine days, they're supposed to be able to stay there, in the campground, twenty-nine days, y'all know about the zoning there. Okay, what happens if they're twenty-nine days up? Can they move to another plot and stay twenty-five, nine more? A lot of these campgrounds, that's what's happening now. So, please, please, take our children in your mind, support us in this, we have a lot of volunteers, wonderful volunteers to keep our organization going. The children are always there with DCS workers, and if, and some of them have ankle braces, and they're lovable, just like the rest of them, but we do have guards there when there's one child that's got an ankle bracelet on. So, please, support us, we want to stay in Newmarket, and our county needs us.
Thank you, Ms. Hobbs.
Doug Abbottson? Doug here?
Good evening, first thing I'd like to say is, as most of you know, I'm on the school board, I'm speaking at a private citizen tonight, nothing I say tonight has anything to do with school board or reflects any of their opinions.
If you would state your name and your address.
Oh, I'm sorry, Doug Abbottson, twenty-five ten Indian Creek Road, Dandridge.
Thank you.
What's the definition of a lie? It's a false statement made with the intent to deceive. Does that definition pertain to the situation that you just denied with prejudice? In my formative years, I was taught that lying is wrong, and that once you lie, you need to keep lying to cover up the lie that you initially told, and that once you're found out to be lying, that there will be, and you should expect, consequences for lying. What's the definition of a shed? According to Oxford Dictionary, it's a simple structure, typically of wood or metal, used as a storage place, a shelter for animals, or a workshop. I ask you, do the two huge log structures that you denied tonight without prejudice fit into this definition? Three stories, joined by a permanent set of steps with decks, terraces, and balconies for the tractors and lawn mowers to sip latte and talk about their, what they did in the field that day. I'm no architectural genius, but I would say that anyone who goes by there, if you were to ask them what those, those structures are, I almost guarantee you, not one of them would say those are sheds. Now, I'm not anti-development, as a matter of fact, my father was a developer, he developed shopping centers and many warehouses, and as a teen, I worked with him, carrying lumber and logs and all kinds of different things to help him out, and he told me that a good builder researches a project to find out if it's profitable, if it fits the neighborhood, and if it meets the needs of the community. That he, that a good builder complies with laws that are in place and procedures that are in place, and if he can't comply, that it's best for him not to proceed with that project, and he cooperates with local regulations, permit, and inspectors. I ask you, does that definition describe the project that you denied without prejudice tonight? There are many honorable and ethical developers out there, my dad was one of them, you guys meet with them every single week, but unfortunately, there's a lot of the other kind out there. And I fear that if you allow this project to proceed, that will send a message of the wrong sort, and will, you will find yourself in this situation many, many times in the near and distant future. Again, a lie is defined as a false statement made with the intent to deceive. Nothing good can come from a project that springs from a lie.
Thank you, Doug. Amen.
Kathleen Villers.
I will pass tonight, thank you, given the denial without prejudice.
Thank you, Ms. Villers. Angela Curry. Angela Curry.
I will also, I was speaking on her behalf, citizen who is absent, and I will also, you'll note at the bottom of the form. I was gonna speak. I will also cast for the same reason.
Thank you. You were gonna read her statement.
Yes, I was.
Okay. Thank you. Gail Frazanian.
Who's that again?
That one too. Yeah. Is Gail here?
Sheila.
Okay. I'll tell you what else, number, I just let you read these. Jeff Tomlin.
Sheila.
Ron Zugey.
Sheila.
David Barker. Barker. David Barker. William Villers.
Sheila.
When I get done. Hey, what's that? Yeah, yeah. You good?
I'm good.
Okay, good deal. Robert Brunner.
Name's Robert Brunner, 600 Brenner Road, Strawberry Plains. As I've sat here tonight and watched a lot of what's going on, uh, one thing that I think would help the body is a lot of people don't understand what authority you have. The gentleman spoke about tearing down the sheds. I've heard that numerous times myself. I don't see you as a body have any legal percussion to do that. People out here need to understand what you're able to do. You know, they've got issues with what's going on, well understood. But to try to save you guys some headache and these people from some misunderstanding, your authority should be written and posted to some of these people what you can and cannot do. I mean, everybody's upset. I think you guys done a good job tonight with the direction that you took. But, uh, a lot of people during that back and forth were really confused. I was trying to listen to what was going on back in the back. People were talking, talking, talking. And there, some of them making some really silly comments. And some of them were making some really concerned comments. They don't know what you guys, ladies and gentlemen, as a group, can do and cannot do. So, as a group, I would try to get that simple, simple form to let people know. I mean, it would help you a ton, 'cause everybody back here was going berserk whenever... Oh, one comment I heard, oh, they're, they were blaming you as a group for that guy removing that agenda. You guys had nothing to do with it. So, that would be my suggestion to you as a group, so people back here know where you stand as what you can and cannot do. I mean, that would help tremendously.
Thank you, Mr. Brunner. James. No one. No one. James Nolan, is he here?
James Nolan, 714 Maguire Road, Newmarket. I've come into you guys tonight, and I think you guys, as the planning commission, need to go to our commissioners to bring up some new ideas about tax revenue coming in, 'cause they seem to wanna put it all on the taxpayers instead. When there's Airbnbs out there, there's hotel motels, there's minerals coming out of the ground can be taxed, and there's RV parks, take some of the burden off the taxpayers for a change. When these other places are... Knoxville just raised their, uh, hotel motel tax up another percent. They went from three to four. Why doesn't this county here start doing some of these things? Take this off the tax burden of the people, you know, in the county. 'Cause, like I say, you got Airbnbs, you got hotel motels, you got mineral tax coming out of the ground. I got even if they just pulled a penny a pound for everything that's taken out of this county, look what that would be. You got RV parks and everything, raise tax revenue. So, I think you guys need to get with the commissioners, get some of this planning going instead of putting it all on taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nolan. Arlene Deverall. Arlene, okay.
Hi, my name's Arlene Deverall. I live at 1882 West Highway 2570, Newmarket, Tennessee. I wanted to speak tonight, I'm sorry, I don't really know. I wanted to speak tonight about, uh, zoning, that the Dozier family that's adjacent to my property is asking to go from an A1 to a C2 zoning for the front part of their property. I have no qualm whatsoever with anyone having a business in their yard. That's not a problem at all. More power to them, that's the American way. But what the situation is, um, I don't know if you have the plot there. I do have it. I was given it by the zoning office. It will show you that, um, where the area that's to be rezoned to C2 is on the Dozier property. Beside the Dozier property, there is a 25-foot easement which lies in the deed to my property. So, that 25-foot easement is under my property, and the Dozier property is adjacent to that. The problem is that easement is a right-of-way to be used for my house and the other house, and the Dozier's are now currently using it to get to their trailer too. We all three use it. It's a one lane, two ruts for the tires to go through gravel road. The C2 zoning that the Dozier's are asking for does not include that right-of-way because that's on my property deed. So, what you would be doing would be zoning for business, for them to do business, which I don't have a problem with. But their intent is to use the right-of-way as the business driveway until such time as they would have funding to put their own in. So, what I'm just asking for is they can get a permit to put a driveway on their property without it being zoned C2. It has to go through the Tennessee Department of Transportation because 2570 is a state road, so they'll need the permission to do that. And I don't know the proper terminology to ask you how to do this. My, what I'm asking you to do is simply postpone it, changing that zoning until they have a right-of, a driveway put in to use that. Because if not, they're gonna be coming up the right-of-way that's not gonna even be zoned business because it doesn't fall on their property line. Does that make sense? I'm sorry, I know it's, I was, did I say it right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. It's a, I don't have any problem with them having a business there. The only thing I would prefer is that they have their own driveway first because once you change it to business and they can start doing business, then what am I gonna do with the right-of-way? If that makes sense. And, and I myself live alone in my trailer. The gentleman behind me not only lives alone, but he's wheelchair-bound. He can't, and all of those extra strangers, which they'll be to us, using that... And I don't even know what the liability would be on that. I, I'm sorry, but my head's been jumping around for, I don't, I guess I, I don't know how to ask you to postpone this zoning until they put a proper driveway in there. And then it can be zoned for business, to, for business. But they, right now, there's no business access to that property. And I'm not trying to be mean and neighborly, it's just... Yes, sir.
Time's up.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Deverall. Don Valley.
How you doing? My name's Don Valley, 1831 Lake Brook Circle, Dandridge. I'm fairly new to the community. Um, saw the posting on the sheds, and my main concern would be if that was inspected and in the sheds, how is that possible? You guys should have some legal recourse or look into the inspector who approved this for being sheds when you log homes. And it doesn't pass the smell test that those are sheds. And allowing that to happen, allowing to have 100-plus kids aged 13 and 19 from Venezuela is not gonna be good for the community. And there should be some legal recourse or something to be looking to legally against this inspector to find out how this got passed. I don't know if you guys can do that? You have an account, or an attorney for this county, correct? You should be able to look into that. Something there does not pass the smell test. How that got passed was a travesty. And that's all I have to say about the whole thing.
Thank you, sir. Beth Nelson.
Beth Nelson, Strawberry Plains, 470 Judson Road. So, I'm kind of at a loss for words tonight on how to even, um, share some things. But I want to talk about the issue here with the RV park in Newmarket. I deal with trauma. I'm certified mental health. I deal with trauma all the time with my students that do my program. You can see straight-through kids that have experienced trauma. And when I say straight-through them, you can see through their eyes all the way through to the back of their head. These kids cannot handle a lot of disruption. And when you have kids that have been sold for sex by their parents, they have been involved, and I'm telling you, I can't sleep at night sometimes because of what I know. But I want you to understand what you're doing. You have kids who have been exposed to drugs all the time. That's their life. You have, have kids that have not been fed or provided for or sent to school. But you are, they are asking for an RV park to be put beside a home that this county embraced and provided for. Tons of people came together to provide a home to keep that from happening. My DCS workers, it's, it's absolutely been a travesty what they have been through to try to get kids placed. And they have to have a place to take these kids, or they are, as someone stated earlier, sleeping on a couch in the office of a DCS office. Our A1, again, how many times have we talked about this? How many times have we talked about A1 needing reform? This is a prime example of that. It's actually a travesty is what it is. So, I don't know what you can do, I don't know what to do, but I am trying to push and say again, you have the ability to work on this A1 zoning and pull the garbage out of A1 that impacts citizens and people in this county. People in this county. An RV park is not a good use for the property in Newmarket. There's obviously a, a page full of things that they, they, you know, did not even do to submit with their plan. I'm asking you to deny their plan. I'm asking you to do something about our A1 zone so that we don't keep continually doing the same thing, 'cause we just keep doing things over and over again, and it's because we aren't committed to work on A1 zoning. And these kids that come to this home need to have a safe place. And that is not what's going to happen with an RV park next door. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just, you can handle those overstep, we're done with them now. Thank you. Okay, now, new business. First item there is rezoning request from A1 Agriculture and Forestry to C2 General Commercial for a portion of property located at 2880 Highway 2570 West Newmarket by Michael Dozier Jr.
I don't know how this works. So, I'm just wanting to open up a welding shop on my property, turn the front part of my property into C2 to have a welding shop.
Our neighbor has voiced concerns. We already told her.
We had a text, we had texting conversation, and I told her. She said, "So, it seems like the priority is to get driveway." Well, time is not for us right now. And I told her, I said, "No, the thing is, is we need to see about rezoning it, and then we're going to put a new driveway in." When we know what we can do, she said, "Well, it seems like the driveway is more important." But I said, "We gotta see what we can do first." But we have every intention, and we can look at her texts. I said, "We're going to put in a new driveway with road access to that part so we can have our..." And I told her, "We can get it in writing if she wanted to." And she doesn't own it. Susan Matos owns the property. She is saying, I don't know what their rental agreement is, but it's not her property either. So, that is, I, I told her plain as day, black and white in a text. I said, "We plan on putting..." And I did say, "Well, if we had business before we're able to do that, we'll take a driveway." And she's like, "No, I don't want that." So, I'm like, "Okay." I stepped back from that. "We're going to put a new driveway in, but we need to get T-DOT out to see what we can do, you know, what all we have to do to get new access." But I told her, "We're going to put it in a driveway, but we just wanna see if we can get it rezoned first."
So, that's all, that's all we want, to know if we proceed with doing the driveway or something, just if we can get it rezoned or not.
And we will write it down and sign it, that we agree that we're gonna put a new driveway in if we can see about rezoning it.
Tim been out with this before.
Tim's talked to them, yes. And they know they have to put in their own driveway. If it is, of course, we make the recommendation to county commission. If it is approved, then we'll have to come back with a site plan.
Before they can ever move on.
Before they can do anything.
Yes.
Okay. Does, anybody have any questions here?
Do we know how much acreage we're talking about?
1.9 acres.
No, a portion, they're wanting to do like the front portion, so at least .92.
So, not the, not the whole piece property?
No, just the front.
Less than acre.
So, so C2, C2 is, is a minimum of how much?
Normally, we can do in the .92 in the last month we've done.
Okay, I just couldn't remember the square footage on C2. Just wanna make sure that...
You have that readily available?
I also make sure we don't, we go down the road and then all of a sudden, all of a sudden you don't meet the guy, the, the size requirements.
Did you leave that? Did you leave that request?
It should probably have.
Yeah. That's, they're in that package, yeah, but I didn't know if you did like you did last month and left them out of their seats. I got the PDF file of...
So you've got in your 1.96 acres.
Yeah.
But they don't want the whole 1.96 acres rezoned. They just want a portion of it rezoned. And basically, it's .92, is that what it is? They're wanting... Or .96.
Your bulk regulations are based on availability of sewer and water.
Right. There's water, but there's no sewer available, public sewer. So they would be dependent upon septic for whatever they put in at your shop.
It's 20,000 square feet.
It's all required, it's just 20,000 C2?
Well, doesn't the request need to state how much of the tract they want? Because as I'm reading it, it's asking for the whole 1.96, but that's neither one...
We just want the front part of the property.
What we're showing here is, says for a portion of the property located at 2880 Highway 2570, what's on the agenda. But I wasn't sure.
I said on here, we've had, it's on map 65, a portion of parcel 1504. Approximately .92 is what it is. And they had...
Okay, approximate, okay.
Of course, where we're not allowed, we're not having, and I know Catherine likes to do it a different way, but we've been not having them survey that off until it's rezoned just because of the cost and the effect that if it were to not be, you know, rezoned.
But the request form says, "I request being owner, agent of the owner of the property, rezoning of property identified as Jefferson County Tax Max 065." Okay, and then they put a portion of point...
A portion of the property.
A .92 acre. Does that mean they're requesting .92 acre?
Yes.
If we get away with a little less, I want to do the minimum. It's going to take pretty much our whole front yard.
What's going to dictate that is basically is the soil and depending on if you're wanting restroom facilities and everything else, that's going to dictate your size here. That can find a partial based upon that, so.
Okay.
Okay. But as of right now, you're requesting .92 of your... So a little less than half of your tract?
Yes.
Okay.
And that was because that's the minimum we were told at the time.
Okay.
And we plan on having a surveyor out. His brother-in-law is a surveyor. And we plan, we have all of that in our plans. We just need to see if we can get it rezoned first before we go down the road. We have seven kids and a homeschool, and we... He owns a business with his brother right now, and for moral reasons, we're having to separate from his brother. And so we, it's just, we just need to know. We can't sink tons of money into something that we can't do in our property. You know what I mean?
Do we have any other questions for?
Ms. Baldwin has some comments.
I'll get to that in just a minute. I'm asking if we got any other questions for them at this point in time.
As long... I mean, I just wanted to make sure, because it sounds like they don't need .92 of an acre. 20,000 square feet would be closer to .4 of an acre, I believe.
Are you directing that to them? Asking if that's enough?
I think.
I mean, are you wanting it to be less, or do you just want to leave it... I mean, right now, you're asking for .92 of an acre.
I'd like to get it surveyed and figure out how much it goes up to our shed. Hate to say that word right now.
Yeah.
It goes up to our shed, and however much of the yard that is. That's how much I'd like to use. But if I have to take more to... For everybody?
The only thing I would caution you all on is if we rezone this, and you're not talking about a lot. We're talking about a few other, few square feet on this thing. I wouldn't ask for less than I would want to be rezoned later on if you needed to build on something on the side of it or...
We're good with the .92.
So that's the only thing I would caution you about.
Yes. Well, it's a pretty good-sized piece, and I don't see it's ever outgrowing that lower, that piece right by the road.
Not ever, but I felt like that.
Jerry, do you have something?
Yeah. Do you have plans to put a restroom in this building?
Not unless y'all require it, because we live right there.
Yeah, our house is right there.
That was my question, is that you don't want to limit yourself if you're going to have to add a septic system in there, because you don't, you never know what the soil's going to be like, and requirements may fall off of that. So that's all. I just didn't know what your plans were.
Do we have any other questions for Dozier? Ms. Baldwin, do you have anything on this?
The first thing is, they're requesting C2. That is any allowable use in a C2 zone district. It doesn't matter what they say they're going to be using for, no spersions. But you need to consider that anything that's allowed in your C2 zone district can go on this tract of land. I personally, when you rezon property and you don't know where that zone line is, it's a real problem to keep track of that. It's a real problem to determine if they come in with setbacks. They have to buffer their own land because they're not subdividing this off. And you're approving, at that point, you will have two principal uses on a single tract of land. It becomes extremely problematic. And it will be now, and it will be more so later. There isn't, you know, I'm a firm believer that when you rezon property, especially in this circumstance, you need to be concentrating on commercial nodes where streets are intersecting, where you have delivery, available delivery for any number of reasons. And this is not that. I looked at your adjacent zone property. There is no C2 in this area. I'm looking at the aerial right now. You mentioned non-conforming commercial uses. There's nothing out here but farmland. So I think those are all issues you should consider in your deliberation.
How far are we down the road from the recycling place? We're not very far away. Barnes? Yeah, that's what I thought. So there is other stuff other than A1 residential in this area. There's a huge recycling place. That's in a half-mile road. I just...
Yeah, you don't have to explain it to me.
Well, I mean, your last statement said there wasn't, and actually, there is.
I mean, I'm...
It could have been a grandfather's Jeep, not showing up on the zoning map.
Could be, but it's there irregardless. Do we have any other questions?
You know, Mr. Chairman, this, we almost could have addressed this. It's just that their partial was not going to work, because it would have been perfect for the new C3 zone. Because it says in here, machine chops, welding shops, those types of things, but they don't meet the requirements.
With that being said, what's the pleasure of the board? We have a motion in the second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the zoning to C2?
Should be approving a recommendation.
Approving a recommendation to County Commission. Yeah, have to go to County Commission, get approved there. Approving the recommendation to go to County Commission. Let it be known by saying, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, moving on to the next item. B, final plat approval for a three-lot subdivisions of lots 11 through 16 of the J.L. Humphreys addition, Jennifer Avenue, Strawberry Plains, by Thomas C. and Shirley Cox, Joseph R. and Dana Dean Norton. Is there anyone here to speak on their behalf?
Yes. You all have a small copy. I have some big copies, and he has his signed copies.
My name is Gerald Moore. I'm with Northern Health Instruction, representing Don Moore, the owners of the property. Don Moore is buying this property. It's already been approved and everything. So we come to the county, and we ask what we need to do to get this transferred over. According to this first map, there seems to be six sections of property here. So what we've done is we've got Garrett to divide this up into three lots. And it's got two houses on it. And then the end lot over here, 12, it had an old house, and it's got a shed on it, but that's going to be tore down. Not going to do anything to the number 12 lot, but number 14 and number 16 are going to remodel the homes. And we've had it subdivided, and I think there's probably, where you can see the measurements of it. So that would make it three separate lots where there'd be all separate areas instead of one piece of land. The two houses on House Level 1 and House Level 2, they're older homes, but we're going to fix them all up and get them all ready. They got power, they got everything, and just redo them. That's the attentions of heaven. I talked to the county, and they said we had to have a new survey made of the property where each house would have its separate lots and not just all zoned together. And that's what we did, and we're just waiting to get approval.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir. You ready for questions? Yeah.
It's R1.
It's R1, it is. It's R1. It's R1. Okay. Okay, do we have any questions for Austin?
Well, so Lot 12, I see where it has proposed house.
Yeah, that's where's an old place that was just built there and it's torn down.
He can explain that he's the owner.
But there is a shed on it right now.
Well, it says proposed house, right? So that would be a building site. Is that... You sure I'm headed with this here?
Yeah.
We were saying, put that on there. They were required to show a proposed building site based on the topography on all our plats for any house that's there. We adopted that.
But, yeah, but it's not marked in size. Does it not need to be marked in size and equal percentage of the lot?
That's where it got... That's where the other plat, the guy from Virginia got in trouble, because he said this box equals...
Yes.
This. If they don't put that on there, then that surveyor is certified that it...
They meet the requirement.
They meet the requirements of 7%.
Okay. So this is, this is good?
This one's fine.
Okay, that's what I wanted to double-check on.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If you look at lots... If you look at lots 15 and 16, I'm not sure if this would have been the case, but the setback should have been 30 feet, and it was only showing, I think, 23.73. But they immediately have gotten a variance. It could have been grandfathered in under the old plat, but once you changed the lot line, would that create a new, would that only make the grandfathering in for the setback on the front?
It doesn't change the status of it being grandfathered. You might want to include it in your motion to recognize it. And so if there's ever a question on the title, they can come back to the minutes of the meeting that creates the law. But it obviously is there.
So the variance would stand even with...
It's always good to recognize it at this point. You know, just to make sure. I would even, and I understand you've got signatures on your plat?
Yes.
Technically, I would want a note on it that says a variance was granted on Lot 16 R to recognize setback encroachment on that lot.
What if it's not a variance? I mean, how do we handle it? If it's a grandfather?
It's, well, you're just recognizing the grandfathering status.
Okay.
And if there's ever a question about a setback variance in a subsequent title search, it would be on the plat instead of him having to go back and search the minutes.
We would need to state that in the motion if we decide to move forward.
Yeah, I mean, the grandfathered status is obviously there, I think. So if he's already got a sig... How many signatures you got on the plat? Eddie Garrett today.
So we can make that C2, have them stay replaced on the plat before it's signed?
It would, and it would be, you know, again, if there's ever a discussion about it or questions in the title search, that would show up. I mean, look at the sheds.
I've got two signatures right here.
I think you've also got a refund taken with outdoor rental structure.
That's true.
rental structure. So there's... That's the original that created...
Do you have the new one? The new one?
No, that's the one I had the signatures on. That's the new plat. This is, this is copied.
You guys got the new one.
That's what she would...
No, this one's still, this is still six lot, or...
Is that a different... Oh, okay, I apologize.
That's okay.
Okay, so the question is, is that you don't have anything with signatures on this plat yet, correct?
Yeah, the man is county, county.
Someone at the county?
Yeah, here, there, there.
That's her.
Hold on a second.
So they've only got one, and that's for...
Is that environmental?
Yeah, that's environmental. Yeah, that's environmental. That's not the plat that they submitted. No. I don't work at plats in meetings. So the one that was emailed out, because I had on here that they'd met all requirements. This does not have a signature block for your water system. This does not have a signature block for your street names. This does not have a... So when I reviewed this plat, all, it was in full compliance. This document is not. No, I don't know.
Was it just a mistake that the changes didn't get made on the one with the signature?
Yeah. Yeah. This is the one he emailed me that he fixed. He added the zoning code.
Yeah, the zoning's on there, the setbacks are on there.
The correct setbacks. So he should have gotten with them to give them a new plat.
Yeah. So he's going to have to get all new signature. This is going to have to be...
I need to get the signatures just on file.
And it's only one. So if you wanted to, you could approve it on the contingent of recognizing the non-conforming status of the house on lot 16R and the shed on 12R.
Plus the necessary signatures that need to be...
They're on there.
Although just not all what we had here.
No. See, the document I have that was apparently emailed to Stephanie, I mean, in my comments...
Signature blocks are on there? They just, the wrong one got signed?
Yes. It's not compliant. This one is. That one was the first one. So last month you guys didn't approve it and I... Yeah, Mr. Garrett wasn't here last month. He's the brain of this. I don't understand it, but...
Okay.
So there is an existing plat with the necessary signatures?
At least in digital.
But they told me, when I was at the court, I was over here, that one guy signed it. And they said that we would have to get... I didn't know if I had to get any other signature after if you approved it to get it done. There you go. First time I've done it, Sarah.
Mr. Garrett should give you a new copy. And if they approve it with this new contingent, then he can add that and that would be your original document. And there would be one, two, three, four, five, six. There are six signature blocks on this one. So he just didn't give you the revised copy. And I'm giving him comments from last time. So he's corrected it and resubmitted it.
Yeah, he said he took care of everything. It shouldn't be...
Yeah, he did.
Okay.
So again, what do I need to do to go to 56?
We still get the...
We've got to get a motion.
Any other questions for him?
Should we go back over those contingencies that have been recommended?
Yes, I think we will in the motion.
Yeah.
Could we go over, so a motion could be made?
Okay, there's...
Has a motion been made?
Not yet. Mr. Ball, I wonder if you would care to go over those contingencies again?
Yeah. I would suggest that your motion might be motion to approve. I have no staff comments, so motion to approve with addition of a statement added in the notes section that recognizes the legal non-conforming status of the house on Lot 16R and the shed on 12R.
And then...
The non-conforming status is the seven-foot difference in the variance in the setbacks.
And so you're not granting a variance. You're just recognizing the non-conforming.
Right. And then the shed being in front of the proposed home site.
And then the other one is the... Eddie just needs to print off the newest copy and then he'll need to get the signatures on that new copy.
Yes.
Or he may have it and it just got mixed up.
Well, as soon as they have it, it's just got mixed up.
She's got one with the signatures on it, right?
It's an electronic copy.
Well, it has the signature blocks.
Yeah.
But it doesn't have the signatures. That's what I was saying. It has the signature blocks, but not the signatures.
So they need signatures.
Yeah, on the proper map.
Yeah, I think the bottom line is, is that with this notice, you can let Eddie know about the contingency. He can add it. He'll print you off a new copy. You get all the signatures. She is the secretary of the planning commission. She would be the last person to sign.
Okay. You okay? Or just take it to the committee office?
Just meet the contingencies?
Yeah.
Assuming...
After we vote on it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Have to get all the signatures.
It sounds complicated, it's not.
I mean, we won't ask them to another meeting.
Yeah, you're good.
Any further questions? What's the board?
It'll probably be next week before I can get everything done.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like. I will make a motion to approve this re-subdivision of lots 11 through 18 of the J.L. Humphreys addition with also, under these conditions, that a statement be added in the notes on the plat by the surveyor of the non-conforming status of the setback on Lot 16R and on Lot 12 of the existing shed here in being a non-conforming use. If a house is constructed with a shed being in front, that it would be a grandfathered use. And the necessary signatures being obtained before the secretary signs it, support for recording.
Yeah, I'll second that motion. And then, Mr. Renault, if you would agree to it. In your motion, you just stated lots 11 through 18. It's 11 through 16. So do you agree to make that change to your motion?
Yes, I will.
Will agree? Okay, so lots 11 through 16.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Do you understand what you need to have done and get done?
Yeah, he took care of me.
Okay.
Mr. Garrett took care of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Moving on to the next item on the agenda. D, final plat approval for a three lot subdivision of Briggs Road, Danridge, by Anthony, Joseph, Campo, and Dawn. And Dawn. Okay. I didn't want to butcher it.
Dawn Sepulveda, 608 Briggs Road, Danridge, Tennessee. Good evening. Thank you for letting me come before you tonight. This has all been very exciting. And I have to say that the whole process I've had to go through to stand before you has been thrilling for me. I think I want to become a developer and work for you. So I brought my sidekick along, who also does all of my labor at home, my boyfriend, and he's the comedian. So I have one property, 4.46 acres. I'm trying to subdivide it into three lots to put another home on Lot 1 and Lot 3 to rent out. I had to leave the workforce to take care of my father and this would supplement my income to help support my family. Everything has been approved as far as septic, soil. I went to electric, they signed off on it, which I have a signed copy here. The water department signed off on it. If you want to see the signed copy here, I have it. Also, you see for Lot 3, it was divided where that lot was larger than the .92 because it will now be a shared dragway. All of this will still continue to be owned by me. I will not be selling any of it.
Brian, there's one, signatures.
I'm still looking at the PDA.
Does anyone have any questions on this one?
A question for her. Ms. Ball?
On your note, you said that approval of septic need to be applied to Lot 1 and Lot 3 only. Would that require two signature blocks?
I already have it. If you want to see them.
No, no. When they sign off on the signature for the septic system, they cannot authorize or make a statement about Lot 2 with an existing house and existing septic. So his approval only applies to Lots 1 and 3. And that was my only note.
But as it is, that plat, would that apply to all three lots then if we don't change it?
Technically, he can't sign off on an existing septic system. At that point, he's stating that for...
What was that? I can't sign off on what?
On an existing, you're not certifying the existing septic system on Lot 3.
I put on there, I think, 3. Did I not put 3 for duplication?
Well, Lot 3 hasn't the, it's the one with the existing septic. So your sign off is on the vacant lots, Lot 1 and 2.
No, Lot 2 was what I live on.
Lot 2 and 3.
Lot 2 and 3, yes. I said Lot 2 and 3.
2 has an existing and there's no need to sign off on an existing system.
You never want to certify an existing system. Unless for whatever reason, you gone out and relooked at it.
Well, I always go out and look to see if I got area for approval of a lot. I make sure they got room for duplication on the lot if they're getting property options.
Right, right. So he's certified Lot 2 and 3.
And there's, so...
Do we need to change anything or are we okay as it...
I mean, that's just a... You know, I always, I always think about the subsequent title holder to make sure that it's clear and easy title search, et cetera, et cetera. And so if you've got a septic sign off, it should reference the lots that he's signing off on. And I assume you operate just like TDEC does. If TDEC doesn't have reference of what they're signing off of, they won't sign it. But now that's TDEC. You may have a different... May do it, it may not matter.
These are signed off by him for what... Does that even matter? I don't know.
I feel like clear on what you're saying. They don't sign off on...
It's immaterial. That's a, that's a, just clarifying the situation.
Your signature only applies to the two lots without dwellings. You're not signing off on what's existing for septic, right?
Yeah.
She's got two permits, right? You've got two permits.
Yeah, right here.
And that one's for Lot 1 and one's for Lot 2. If someone's looking...
One and 3.
If somebody's looking for a sign off for Lot 2 because it's for sale, you want them to understand that...
Oh, I'm never selling. That's why I'm spending all this money to build.
There's always a subsequent title holder. I'm just looking.
I don't think there's an issue. I just want to make sure we get this paper right.
You don't have to include it in your motion.
We don't?
No, I mean, that's just a recommendation. I don't...
Lot 2 has an existing septic system that at some point in time was approved.
If you'll give me about one minute, I'll clear this up just in a minute.
It was approved. It was, so the only thing...
Or grandfathered.
It's there.
That's done. So all he needed to approve was 1 and 3.
Right.
Yeah, I don't think there's an issue.
So what was the question?
Do we need to change the wording on the box that it only applies to lots 1 and 3? I think Tommy might clear this up for us right now.
Yes, sir, Tom.
I can sign wherever I sign it. I'm saying that has a system, you know, it's been approved through our department for a septic, okay? I've issued her two permits on the lots that's vacant. The lot that currently has a house on it, if it did not have area for duplication or approved system on it, unapproved system, I would put that on the map, okay? So when I sign it, and of course, I can change that, no problem. I put stamps on there that I approved. Lot 1 with the house on is 3, has duplication area. It's approved for duplication on it. That's it. The other two are approved. I can put 1 and 3, or 1 and 2, whatever is approved for a septic. That's no problem.
Is there need for that?
It's, in some areas, that standard, for him to say, for there to be a note for which lots he's authorizing for septic. Which is Lot 1 and 3. It's not mandatory if there's ever a question about it.
Okay, but he just said he approved lots 1 and lots 3 and 2...
And evaluate Lot 2.
And evaluate Lot 2 that there was duplication there if need be. Yeah.
Yeah.
So he's approved off 3.
Yeah.
Okay. Is that okay if you talk? Okay. Any other questions about the septic system?
You good with it? Yeah, I'm good with everything. I'm moving to approve.
We have a proper motion second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Original right here.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item E on the agenda. Site plan review for New Market RV Resort. 42 sites to be located on Old AJ Highway.
Before you get off doing that, I have a quick question. Are we all done with the Isaiah House and trailer parks? I didn't hear no gavel. Did you say they're not going to do that? Is that going to be...
That's what we're talking about right now, sir. You're fine. Yeah, I'll restate that. Item E on the agenda, site plan review for New Market RV Resort. 42 sites to be located on Old AJ Highway West, New Market, by John T. and Melissa Ballinger. Ballinger's here.
Yes, sir. I'm Matt Sprinkle, I'm the civil engineer. I prepare the design site plans that we're reviewing and are in front of you right now. So I can answer any technical or site-related questions you may have. Yeah, and I went ahead and I got the comments on the plans and if I may, hand these out, my responses.
Yes.
My responses are unread.
Can I get one? Oh, thank you, John. Well, are you?
You got it close enough, whether you meant to or not.
Brian, I'll take the one on the floor. You take this one.
No, it's a big copy.
Does that one have the changes in it?
No. They have not been updated yet, but these will be the changes that we've made to the plans that you're seeing.
That first one, Mr. Catherine, with our camp ground regulations, can that be done? First one, they're going to combine it with the subdivision plant. Is that something we can do or not?
Whenever a commercial building crosses a property line, you've got setbacks, you've got easements. The back lot appears to be... Is it landlocked anyway?
No, no. It's not landlocked.
Okay, so it's a flag lot.
Is a subdivision plant the proper terminology for removing a lot line? Because that's, in essence, that's what we'd be doing, just removing the center lot line.
So that track in the middle is going to be part of it or not, John?
No, the middle one that has frontage on the road.
No, the lower property is not. That's...
So it's between the...
The lower property separates my... I've got two parcels on one side of them, one on the other.
So the parcels you're talking about doing is the one...
The flagpole lot, yes.
The flagpole lot back there where the barn is and...
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. That one, in essence, make that parcel for 11 acres.
Have you already made the corrections? I see some of it... It looks like some of it, the way it's worded, that you have corrected it, and some of it you intend to correct?
No, these corrections have not been issued.
Okay.
But these are the ones I... This is what I intend to do. I've already made most of them, but I just haven't had a chance to issue them yet.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I was misunderstood. This is a separate campground, they don't own.
Right. So these should be considered totally separate. They're on separately lots of record. They should both meet minimum requirements.
So currently, we're looking at three parcels, three separate parcels?
Yes.
Okay. What would the plan be for the parcel that's separated from the other two?
It'd be a freestanding parcel.
So it'd be a separate deal?
Correct.
Yeah, it would have to meet all the same requirements.
So we can't look at these together then? Wouldn't that be two separate requests, two separate...
Site plans.
Site plans.
I mean, technically, you are, from a practical standpoint. And I evaluated them for compliance for each tract.
Well, so really, we need to look at it in three different tracks right now, don't we?
You know, once again, you've got roads and RV sites setting astride a lot line. So... You kind of have to look at them together. That's why my first thing was, you've got to combine these lots. Otherwise, they're in violation of setbacks, they're in violation of...
I hear my head all day. I don't see what we can do with this then, if it's in three separate properties, or three separate parcels.
The question is, to me, Mr. Chairman...
Go ahead, Terry.
The question is, is that, does it meet the guidelines as laid out? Okay. Since this is not contiguous to each other, the one section over here, to me, I think needs to be a standalone, and it doesn't meet all the requirements that are there. The other one, basically, may meet some of the requirements, but the problem is, is that until it's actually combined together in as a two-lot to a one-lot subdivision, then it would be legal then to address it as a site plan for a campground. I mean, that's the way I interpret it.
I just don't see anything that can be done with this item, other than to deny it based on how it's presented. Because we're talking about three separate parcels, and then the site plan shows. So I guess with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll move to deny item E. I mean, there's a list of things, but it does not meet the requirements in our zoning regs.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? Have a second. Do we have any further discussion?
So what have they got to do to get this to a point that we can look at, Mr. Catherine? If you're looking at the thing, you know, they got to apply for the... To do the subdivision in a separate meeting. I mean, have they got a... How is it... Walk us through this.
Well, I think, first of all, I appreciate you addressing my comments in the manner that you did. That's very professional. I think the first thing is, and obviously, you said a parcel, you would combine them with the subdivision plant, so you could submit this with a resubmital, and that way you would be dealing with two sides. I mean, you've already got your SWIP, so you've worked on this for a minute. That's hard to do. I mean, that represents some time. So the other items, maybe we should just go through them. The limits of disturbance, if you're marking those in the field, obviously, they have to, for septic disposal, especially of this nature, that has to be under disturbed. So, you know, if you mark them with somehow in the field, usually the orange plastic thin.
Yeah, just like that, yep.
The... There was a failure on the site plan to meet the minimum requirements of a clubhouse, an onsite individual, not a clubhouse, but a laundry room...
Office and bathhouse.
Bathhouse, and an onsite individual.
For the other...
For the other lot. Each lot has to stand alone, because if we approve this site plan, you could sell the second one tomorrow, and it's noncompliant. So you can't count the improvements on the other one. So they said they would address that. Length of stay is limited to 29 days. That needs to be on the site plan. 24/7 management onsite, that needs to be on the site plan. You've got storage areas. They have to be 100 foot off the property line by code. So you didn't mention these. Are they 100 foot off now?
They are. There is dimensions on, from the side property. I didn't add a dimension to the bottom.
Okay.
If you look on C200, but I can...
And also, your existing shed that's on there, you've got setback requirements, and I think they're... You need to check that.
Okay. But that would be considered a storage, that's...
Well, you're making it... The one, the shed that you've marked is supposed to be your clubhouse, or not clubhouse, your utility site. So is it in compliance with side yard setback and rear yard setback?
It is for a building, you know, based on the setbacks that I've got from, that are based on the zoning. 50-foot setback.
You had no garbage containers onsite? I don't know what those would look like for an RV. I know that the site plan requires garbage containers. You know, those should be screened, et cetera, et cetera, and, you know, have a concrete apron on them. I'm assuming you're using asphalt.
Correct, yes.
So concrete apron, if you're doing a dumpster. You have no buffers. So there is a vegetative buffer along the east side on, let's say, the second tract. On the other ones, I checked the aerials. You got no trees. So that's a pretty good butt way. It's a 10-foot required buffer to make sure that that is, actually performs the function it's intended for. I put that you should have, first off, six-foot high, you know, this heavy sheared evergreens.
Yeah.
Do them on 40 foot, do two rows 40-foot center staggered, and that should do it. And if you've got, you've got it on the east side of lot two, but there is no buffer on the west side of lot two. So you have to do it on the entire perimeter of the first lot and the rear and east side, west side of lot two. Your RV license should be submitted. You've got, there's a requirement for one parking space per unit plus five. You show parking lot, parking spaces for guests. You did not show any parking spaces or dimension them for your RV sites. That's a...
Yeah, they're going to be in front of each side.
I'm sorry?
There's room in front of each side. I'll indicate on the price plan.
But it's, your RV pad is one spa... You didn't provide dimensions on that. So, and the code does call for a specific dimension there. I wanted to make sure your electric service is going to be underground?
Yes.
Okay. That needs to be added as a note. Your driveway width dimension, you're required to do 20-foot of pavement. That wasn't dimensioned.
It's on, no, I'm sorry. It's on C200.
Yeah, I know you added it.
No, it was on the original.
Oh, was it?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's probably hard to see, but they did.
And your first 300-foot of... Now, I'm reading from the ordinance. The first 300-foot of access roadway is supposed to comply with the county roadway standards. I think you probably need to give us design for that, a sealed engineered design.
Yeah, it's on, the pavement section's on sheet C800, which I believe meets the county's minimum pavement section. One and a half, three, eight. I mean, that's 12-inch thick pavement almost, so...
And you might want to have your county road superintendent take a look at that to see if he...
Yeah, if that's not accepted.
Terms that that's compliant. And your guest parking spaces. Usually, for buffers, you just do a cross-section. You know, you... Don't just throw a bunch of trees on here. You just do a cross-section, say this is the requirement we're going to meet for this area. Again, on the east side of lot two, it looks like your existing tree stands pretty good. You got a little house back there. Is that the house? Yeah, it looked like there was a break in the vegetation there, at least from the aerial. Now, you know, they would T-dot aerials. I don't know how they are.
The last little point you've got, Catherine, mentioned for guest parking. Is it not at the bottom of C200? Visitor parking, abandoned parking, typical parking space, 10 and 19?
Yeah, this is the first time I've seen a real size. I was looking at the electronic ones. Yes.
I'll put the actual dimensions on the actual space, typical space. Sometimes the notes not always clear.
And I don't know, do you, you know, ADA is... I don't know what ADA applies to. Do you know what...
Yeah. RV resorts I've done has not required ADA spaces.
I would think just the nature of the RV that...
Yes. If, you know, if somebody had a wheelchair or something, they would have their own electric lift to get in their vehicle.
At that point, you wouldn't have a parking space necessarily for them. But that's not in the code either. Although you might want to check that. Those are federal requirements.
Correct.
Everything...
Yeah, like I said, the ones I've done previously is not...
Yeah.
I will certainly check.
Yeah, I would check that before you are short of parking space and have to add ADA compliance.
Sure.
Any other concerns, questions, Terry?
I got one. The size of the existing water line at Old AJ Highway, do you have that, the size of that, is it sufficient to handle this?
Yes. We met John Neil, or John Allen, sorry. We met John Allen on site and discussed that, and we're good.
Okay. Typically, I think we require some fire hydrants off of that at this...
Fire hydrant, yeah. I've got... I've got two areas of clarification, if you don't mind.
Sure.
So when we combine parcels point oh eight and point oh seven, we will then have two parcels instead of three. Does each parcel need its own submission? Or when we come back, can we do one set of blueprints with both parcels identified? They'll both have their own site plans.
I mean, I, that's probably whatever y'all done in the past. Uh, it wouldn't, I wouldn't object to, I wouldn't personally have an objection to it. As long as you demonstrate that you, both sites are in full compliance.
In full compliance, yeah.
That's true.
Okay.
And your county road superintendent's looked at that first 300 foot.
What is a state RV license?
Um, you have to be licensed for an RV park.
Through?
I think through TDEC.
It's.
State of Tennessee, so, okay.
Been fairly recent.
Yeah.
They'll, they'll review these same plans.
They start to track up.
Yeah.
It is probably for no other reason than to make sure you're taxed appropriately.
Of course.
So with what we have here tonight, this cannot be approved. Parcels one and two and the first piece have to be combined. And then we have to have two separate site plans, correct? Is it?
That made all the requirements?
That made all the requirements.
No. You said two separate.
I said they both have to be in compliance.
Both site plans have to be in compliance. As individuals, correct?
Uh, individually, yes. As far as representation on this, um, one drawing, I, I don't, I don't see the, I don't see the purpose of making them separate them and do two submittals. Except unless you have a fee for review. You don't have a review fee for commercials.
Okay, Terry.
Can I just speak, done in phases, if they bring a site plan for phase one, phase two, they caught, if they labeled them that, and then basically both of them met, and then we made a motion to, to approve, we could say phase one, phase two, that was submitted, would that work?
Sure.
Okay.
We do that, so.
Uh, are you going to phase them in, or are you going to do both of them at once?
We probably will phase in the first 11 acres and then do the five acre parcel.
Okay, so they, so they need that, but they also have to come back and file for the subdivision plat. We've got to hear that, that's got to be separate. And we got to hear that, right?
Yeah, that would be a separate submittal, separate motion, separate action.
Well, they don't actually have to come before, it's, it's a two lot subdivision. If they combine it, basically it can be signed off in-house, that would, if that's a time saver for you, okay?
If you authorize the staff to look at it.
Is that what it looks like just a minute ago?
Sort of. But then, then once you record that, then you're, you can just reference that recorded plat, we know, hey, they're together.
Will Tim sign off on that?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. That's who we need to go see is what I meant.
Yes.
Okay.
But that, but it is just a two lotter.
We, but now, that might be a problem from the standpoint of, if it's a two lot subdivision, you're supposed to sign off on the individual lots. Have you evaluated this for, on a campground? Who does, does, does TDEC sign off on campground? Who signs off on campground?
They will, you know, I'll sign off on it. If it's an engineer's deal and everything, step away, they want to do it. I can require them to go with TDEC or whatever, but I can sign off on, uh, do it in phases.
I was just concerned that, and it's such a large, if, when you combine them, uh, it'll be a fairly large tract, so.
If you're done with phase one, phase two, I'll approve the phase one, phase two. Not as, as whole. But that, and as far as looking at it right now, I'm looking at it at two separate campsite, you know, campgrounds.
Right, right.
Not one.
But when they come to you for sign off on two lots?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, do we have any further questions? More discussion? Most pleasure, both.
You have a motion and a second.
I'm sorry, forgive me, I got.
It's okay, it's okay.
What was your motion?
Uh, my motion was.
You came so early on, I'm sorry.
My motion was to deny item E on the agenda because it does not meet our zoning requirements.
Correct me before I ask, we did not have a second, correct?
We did have a second.
We did have a second, who's second most important? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Being none, all those in favor of denying, they've been on the same eye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
She's going to be here Christmas Eve. She hasn't decided.
We ain't got to that yet, I've got a note too decided, but we ain't got there yet.
I'll check with that.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, guys. Okay. See, if this keeps going like this, we're going to make a good table. Because you can keep up with nothing. I'm going to say, the agenda's somewhere in here.
I don't know, some kind of town, they're building some brands there.
Yeah.
Maybe you put a shed up.
With laid back chairs and, you know.
Should you put a nice shed up, John Neil?
That was tried by a former facility director to get new chairs. That worked out really well.
I think he wants a lounge.
He's no longer with us.
Austin, did you get my agenda? Here it is. Okay. Next item is if a resolution amending the zoning resolution Jefferson County, Tennessee, presented by Mr. Austin Brooks.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I really tried this time, I really did. But something else came up, you all probably haven't heard anything about it, but something else came up that I had to talk to the attorney about, so we did not get to complete, uh, this for presentation. So I move to defer this to our next meeting.
Okay.
Whenever that may be.
Okay. Okay, any more discussion on that?
Are you going to add that you added in there?
On the campground resolution?
No, the, no.
This is not, this is.
Hold on.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor of postponing?
Aye.
All of the opposed? Next item, G. A resolution amending the zoning resolution Jefferson County, Tennessee regarding a new C3 wholesale and warehouse commercial district, presented by Mr. Austin Brooks.
Mr. Chairman, I believe when we left off last meeting with this item, uh, that Ms. Baldwin was going to work on it. I don't, I don't really remember where we were at on that. Um, I know John Neal had talked about value-added processing.
Yeah.
And I don't know if we ever got a definition. I guess, you know, my question still remains on value-added processing is, is where do you draw the line between, uh, someone like, you know, an operation like Terry Sellers used to have, running through beef cattle, compared to an operation like Bush Beans? You know, at what point does it, does it change, does the use change? Because the way John Neal defined value-added processing, it sounded like Bush Beans actually fell into that. And if we're doing that, we're actually just creating another industrial zone, and we're not taking care of the, the issue at hand.
Go ahead, Terry.
I, I was going to say, under your prohibited uses, what, down there, like heavy manufacturing, heavy assembly, compounding, packaging, bottling, processing, and other industrial uses, would that, would that eliminate something like Bush Brothers out of that, that statement as, for that? I mean, I'm just asking, it would or not?
Perhaps, but it still seems like a bit of a gray area. What I want is, is a zone where some of these smaller businesses can go into, and there doesn't have to be a big fight in the community every time. And we're not turning potential businesses away from our county anymore. So that, that.
I mean, I like, I like what you've got, okay? Uh, I think my question the only other time we looked at it was, is that we were trying to dictate the size of the building, as far as it goes, I felt like that the acres itself and the setbacks would dictate, and I don't, I don't see any language in there now.
I think.
There's a less than 50%.
Yeah, I think Catherine, yeah.
No, what he's referring to is the, um, limiting the building. And the way I addressed it was max item G.
Yes.
Um, maximum lot coverage.
Right, so there's no square footage.
Which is a standard.
Just depends on the lot.
Yeah, if you've got two acres, you can cover 50% of it. I also added the figure, it includes the accumulation of multiple structures.
Yes.
Um.
You put a recommendation for there also be 40 feet between the structures, correct?
Yeah, I think that might have been there earlier.
Is that there?
About item one under minimum building setbacks?
No, we're down at G.
No, I.
Oh, you're at G.
Maximum lot coverage.
Now, to address the other item, I added, and this is for discussion. Uh, conditional uses, I add them, item D. Um, value-added processing of, and product sales of produce, provided that no more than 50% of produce originates offsite. Um, I think to avoid a Bush Beans, um, you could, there are minimum requirements. Cities are now adopting maximum requirements.
But if you've got, if you've got a farm or when they own different tracts of ground at different locations, and it's still the one producer, and that's kind of where I'm at. We've got different tracts of ground that are separated by other parcels of land.
Right.
So you said onsite, produced onsite.
That's a good point.
So couldn't, how much made us from the field over here to the cannery that was built here on this place? Or our salsa plant?
Um.
If I've got, if it was, let's say I was doing Terry Sellers and I was, uh, processing my own beef, and I've got three farms that I supply that beef from, and they're scattered out across the county, if it's his own site.
Well, unlike in his scenario, he didn't produce any of the.
I, I know, when I said, if I'm processing.
He was just providing a service, yeah. He actually wasn't producing.
And if you do it.
Be careful with that, because that limits your producers. And, you know, that's, there's a lot, mo- most folks that farm on any scale, on, on mustard scale, have different tracts of ground.
And I'll admit, I, um, so there are a lot of planners around.
Right.
And I know most of them. So I started calling friends and saying, you know, how do you handle this? How do you handle this? And everybody jumps to slaughterhouses. And they do, they're, you know, they're in industrial zones, they don't let you just put them anywhere. And the offsite impacts of those items and even the agricultural licenses and inspections and stuff, it's, it's a, it's a different animal. But even value-added processing, I've never, usually when I ask my colleagues, I get an answer. And, um, this one, I said, I gotta, well, that's a tough one. And, um, they really, it, it seems like it's a, they kind of felt like it was maybe a Pandora's box. But I also can see how i- if you got, and I'm assuming that most of your agricultural production here is, um, vegetables or, or produce, not cattle.
Actually, cattle is the, is the largest.
I would say it'd be hay, actually.
Uh, revenue in the county.
Cattle's level one.
But we're sitting beside Granger County, which is hugely diverse. We're sitting beside Cock County and Green County and Hammond County, which are huge vegetable producers. Bush, uh, pepper, uh, you've got some boys up there.
You've got grain farmers too.
They, they got grain, but what I'm saying is that you've got, yeah, you've got some major players in produce. But that's not the top thing in the county.
Do you know how they address it? Do they allow it only in industrial, or do they allow production in agricultural zones?
I've never found that they've got it in there, in their stuff. And that's what I'm saying, that, you know, this, the value added, everybody wants to jump to a slaughterhouse or a meat processing thing, but there's so much more.
More.
Besides that, and, and, you know, you've got, uh, yeah, and you can, and we got into this. Uh, we had a person in the county that was on one thing, and they took the agritourism statute and molested it. Uh, that we went all the way to.
That's a bait in county's existence.
We went all the way to spring court on that one, and they still didn't help us define it. So there's a lot of ways that, I mean, they can go around this, but I would rather have something that says, okay.
Right.
This is what we need to do.
And I think the problem I saw with it was, you've got all this produce being made, and yet individually, um, there's no economies of scale of only doing your own produce. Um, to make it profitable. And so you're not only limiting that activity by one farmer, you're, you're even limiting the ability of the other, other, uh, producers who are growing small amounts, that somebody has to set up a huge, uh, plant to process it in industrial. And usually, um, produce is.
I'll give you an example of grapes. And, and we've got several vineyards in the county, and they take them to a central point to be processed. There's, they've got a, uh, somebody that, that is processing their grapes for them.
I, I know a grape.
But there's several producers that are doing that.
I've been in Granger County, and, uh, one of the vineyards, that's a wedding, that's a bit, entertainment venue, usually wedding venue, um, they utilize their own grapes, but winemaking, and they produce wine. Winemaking takes a lot of grapes, so they take grapes from all their, all the grapes grown in the county and comes in, and, but I don't know what it's on, I don't eat, I don't think Granger County has that. So it, it didn't come up. Uh, I also made this a conditional use, so it's not a use by right. Somebody has to come in and at the discretion of the planning commission, or the BZA, would determine the conditional use. Um, and typically.
Let me ask you this question, Ms. Catherine. Why make it a conditional use when you've got the other, if you've got a commercial thing, why not include it in with it? If you've got a garden center, and they're stacking up mulch, if you've got, uh, all these other things, why not make the value added a value use?
The intent of the district, though, is so we can get businesses in and have an easier time with the rezoning process. You know what we face anytime an I-1 comes in. And it really doesn't even matter if there's, what the benefit to the county is because of the things that are allowed in I-1. So if we're not careful and we open the door on this one, we haven't accomplished anything. We've sat here and wasted all this time because all we've done is create what is essentially another industrial district, and that.
But you've got prohibited use up here of a slaughterhouse and custom slaughterhouse. So you're taking that out, which is the hot button issue.
That's it.
So, so why?
Is there any place in the county you can actually pro- get a beef processed?
Not in our county now.
Well, yes, there, yeah, there is.
Where?
Uh, Dusty Carter has one over in White Pine, Terry used to do it.
Terry's Hills used to do it.
Terry Sellers, yeah.
He's shut down.
He's in the web business.
Two bucks, two bucks does, um.
Yeah.
But they're.
Very limited.
Very limited, yeah.
Very small scale.
And they're allowed in.
And they usually do deer.
And can they get, are they allowed to have it USDA graded there?
No.
No, they are processing the animal for you, so it's your animal.
Facility is inspected, but not the meat.
That makes sense.
So it's for custom.
Well, if, if I buy a cow from John Neal and I take it to Carter Custom Meats and have it processed, it's my meat.
Right.
And that, that, that's how, that's how I got so good looking as eating farm run beef.
Yeah, but.
That's how it happened, I'm serious.
Yeah.
You think it'd be good if we read that?
But wouldn't it be better?
I mean, we could add, we could add a section to define it.
We're, we're talking about trying to decide, or determine, or decide, or you have the wording defined value added in the state of Tennessee Department of AgriCrust, who's already done that.
Okay.
They actually have a statement out, and I will share that with you if you don't mind.
Is that what was just handed to John Neil?
I have no idea. Is that, you got TDA stuff?
No, this, this is a, Mr. Bruner handed me this. It says, value-added products in reference to a machine shop are manufactured parts that have been enhanced beyond basic machining, incorporating additional services like finishing, surface treatment, custom modifications, quality inspection, or specialized coatings.
Scroll down.
Uh, how far I'm gonna scroll?
It's like tool and die?
Uh, surface finishing, heat treating, custom designs. Uh, surface finishing, heat treating, custom designs, uh, material selection expertise. So, I mean, there's, there's all kinds of definitions with value-added stuff.
Yeah.
But I, I guess you're, you're opening it up to machine shops, but you're not willing to open it up to agriculture. Really? I mean, that's basically where we are right now. You're, you're limiting them to a conditional use, but you're gonna open it up to a machine shop.
I don't really see that, I never had intended for agriculture to be in this.
I know.
Yeah, yeah, this is a been I-ed.
Been eliminated from agriculture, and we've sit here for three or four years now, and we've, we've not done anything on agriculture. But yet, when we claim about the survey, we want to hold a rule field. We want to keep everything agriculture. Well, I'm telling you, it takes money to do that.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't disagreed on that with you, John Neal.
If we don't open things up for the agriculture in this thing, if we're forming a new zone, and you're opening it up for the business, and you want the small business, the incubator type stuff to come in, then agriculture needs to be a part of it.
But, okay, but if we don't define this properly, we're gonna have the same fight as we do with I-1, and then there's no point.
So...
We're, so we're...
In all of the things...
We're not, I swear, we're not that far apart.
I've not heard one person come in and say anything about value-added. All they've talked about is slaughterhouses and meat processing. They've never talked about an ice cream shop.
Yep.
A frito shop, a tortilla shop, or anything.
I understand. I just wanna know, how...
And you've eliminated the hot button.
How do we define the value-added? And, and I know Terry pointed out that heavy manufacturing is in there. I'm just curious, does that cover something like a bush beans getting to go into a...
I think you're eliminating not once your heavy manufacturing. I mean, you build a, a sixty-three million dollar addition to the plant, that's pretty, looks pretty clear-cut to me.
Well, a- and this was, this was my thought process of, when you make something a conditional use, you're gonna try it out. And my, my, uh, what I was suggesting was that we identify, um, what other caveats, and, and I'm sorry, I would, I would keep it conditional at this point just to make it acceptable to everybody. Once, once it's demonstrated that it's not the owner's thing that you're thinking of, then at a later date, you can make it allowable. But at this point, there seems to be a real lack of comfort here with adding it in this zone district, or in anything other than industrial. So, I understand you don't have it, uh, but, um, making it conditional and then adding your conditions in. Uh, you've already got in here that, um, and there's already some, some conditions that are in here. I think there's one that says, uh, the conditional uses must have public sewer and public water. That would keep it, you know. Uh, also that it meets requirements from transitional and nuisance screening. Um, but now, I would say that that's, should be done for, you got permitted uses, that you should require transitional and/or nuisance screening, from my perspective. Um, and it may be that by creating the C-three district, you could make an overarching requirement that any C-three that abuts agricultural has to be screened anyway. Uh, they also, so, um, what is a...
Before we get too fur- going on down through, I think Terry's got something going on.
I, I just got one question.
Don't lose the...
On your condition number two, uh, have to have public sewer. We don't, there's no public sewer.
It's just in the cities.
Yeah, it's only in the cities.
Okay.
So we would eliminate anything in the county, because none of where, nowhere in the county, in the county zone itself is a public sewer available.
Um, that was in the original draft. What you might wanna say, um, is that, since there isn't public sewer, that instead of having a septic system, that they have a, where'd he go?
He had enough.
He gave him the thought.
That...
This room's getting empty.
One of the requirements would be a step system. That, uh, you can't just, that, uh, when you're on this, um...
So if we just put in here...
Cause everything that's in...
An approved sewage system.
Uh, well...
There could be...
You brought up bush beans. Their, their water would be considered sewage to some, but it's actually fertilized back to the ground.
Well, but now they have their own.
They have a treatment plant where they can do that stuff.
But, in a, let me bring up one thing. Under, under your permitted uses, you're looking at businesses that would have a bathroom and maybe some, uh, shower for changing facilities or something like that. When you're talking about value-added processing, you're producing some affluent that needs to be managed. So it would not, in that respect, and if you're not gonna have a maximum size on it, or some sort of limitation, I would think that that water, you could assume that it needs to have some level of treatment, and that would be above just a regular septic system that you would have for bathrooms.
So what if they put in a digester? I mean, and I, I guess I'm, I'm gonna side with Mr. Terry there on that one. An approved system, I don't have any problem with that verbiage. But if they were to put in, if they're processing tomatoes, and they put in a digester, and all that plant waste and affluent and everything out of the processing went to the digester, created gas and electricity and fed back into the Appalachians grid and all of it, I mean, you know, you can go all the way down the road on it. But what I'm saying is, that is an approved method for disposal of that without all of this other.
So how, uh, and, and this is the time when, uh, the verbiage is every, words have meaning. I've got an attorney friend, that he, that's his opening line for everything, words have meaning. So one of the conditions would be that, uh, when they come to the Board of Zoning Appeals, there would have to be a proposal for their method of managing. And if it's...
I don't have any problem.
Yeah, I could live with that. I, I think that...
Okay, so under three, you would have an A. Um...
Hold on, where are we at?
Probably better than two.
Two.
Oh, I'm sorry, for, under D, you would have a little one.
Minimum lot size. Where are we at?
I'm under C-D, C-one-D.
Oh, okay, okay.
One D.
C-one-D. And you would have a one, that the applicant must, uh, provide detailed information on the method of, um, managing the affluent from the operation.
That's, I think that's good. I think that covers it.
Um...
Cause the reason being was, I was afraid we were putting a condition in there that would knock out all our conditional uses if there's...
You'd basically nullify it.
Nullify it.
Yeah.
And because my thing was, if you look at some of the things in here, if you were a solar energy system, you really don't need an elaborate septic system. And if you're a wind farm, and everything that's allowed there, you don't need something elaborate, because it's very simple, so...
And once again, we're just trying to get it...
I'm just saying that.
John Neal, can you...
I think the way this, if, if, if you're okay with that wording, I, I, I like that verbiage that she has there.
Can you explain to me again, how does a shop like Stewsbury, they're, they're in A-one, right?
Because they produce all of their product, and they're exempt.
Would it not be easier to go into the A-one zone and try and...
Can't do it. If I don't produce it, I can't, I'm not exempt.
Can we not?
If I, if I build a salsa plant...
Next to the massage parlor.
Next to the massage parlor, and right then from, from the slaughterhouse.
That's, there's so many jokes in there.
But if I build that and I buy Brian's tomatoes, I'm out of compliance, right then.
So you're saying...
No, but I'm saying, you know, you're putting this into C-three. Would it, but at that point, then you start daunting the county with, with C-threes. Would it not be better just to go into the A-one zone, into our zoning?
I've tried, but they won't pass it.
Well, but you never presented...
I presented a full-blown A-two that had this in it, and it got denied, it got shot down.
But again, if you go too heavy with it, you really are just creating an...
It was the most restrictive.
I don't, I've not seen it, so I don't know, but...
It was one of the most restrictive zones we've ever written.
Okay, I've never seen it, so I, I don't know. But what I'm saying is, I, everybody loves Stewsbury, right? I mean, I've never heard a negative comment about that operation. So I don't think, I really don't think there's an issue with farm shops like that throughout the county. In fact, I think that's something that's desired.
Well, the way we've got it, there is absolutely no place, if you do not produce it.
So why not go into the A-one zone and try and create that?
A- and to his point, uh, in your A-one district, you have permitted uses and you have prohibited uses. You do not have conditional uses.
Yes.
And one of the things that a lot of...
We come into A-one, I'm not, I'm out on conditional uses on that. It's either in or out.
Well...
But if you're doing, if you're doing a business district, and you're gonna allow this other in it, and you're going back to a farm-based thing with a business, now I don't mind saying we have conditionals, and it's gotta be limited by size and certain things like that, but if, if we go in there, it should be a right. It should be a use that you absolutely...
But it sounds like you're not getting a right. It sounds like to, to, the middle of the road is to make it a conditional use, so it comes to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and you've got a special set of conditions just for that use that you, as the BZA, determine compliance with.
Well, I think that that ought to be a right to do it, but I don't have a problem with them coming to the board and then saying that you've got, because you're this close to, uh, subdivision, or you're this close to whatever, you've got to do certain things and put performance standards on it.
Well, that's, that's what a conditional y- you see. It's an additional set of performance criteria.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, when we put this in as a conditional use, it is up to the BZA or whoever to determine if they can do it or not.
Right.
I don't want it to worry, it's, it's a right that they can do it, if you put it in, just like you're gonna pass this as a right at the machine shop, and the garden center can go in. Now, but I, I don't know how we do it. I don't, if they wanna put the performance standards on that, I think that, I think for us to say it's a conditional use, whether or not you can do it...
You're talking about in A-one?
I thought, if it's in A-one.
Okay.
It should be the right that you can do it, if you can do that, but you have to do this to do it.
And you, you can't do that. You, uh, um, you've got permitted uses, and they're just permitted.
And we can't put performance standards on those?
Um, well, I mean, I don't see in any, any in here, um...
Yeah, but if you introduce a new one, can you not put, put performance standards on it?
You can't pick one use and put performance standards on it unless it is under conditional. It's, it would be the exact same thing as what we're talking about in the C-three. It would just be a conditional use. And it sounds like you've run it up the tree to get it in, as a, as a use by right in A-one.
No, I, we're going to create an A-two district.
Right. Okay, but that, that wasn't...
We worked probably a year on that thing, back and forth.
I know how it goes.
Did we include a s- a small slaughterhouse operation in A-two?
It was in A-two.
Well, now, so, we do have small custom slaughterhouses that are allowed in A-one currently.
Yes.
You're aware of that. That's, that's like what I was describing, and I think maybe that's what you were describing, Brian.
Exactly, and that's, that's permitted, really.
That's happening right now in the county. That's what Terry Sellers was doing.
That was, yes, but the, the one that was proposed on eleven E, as far as it goes, when they submitted the site plan for it down there, it met the requirements, because it was zoned A-one, okay, for the requirements, for a small-sized slaughterhouse. Which, there was...
But they didn't have the, there's capacity limits on a custom slaughterhouse, and I think that's what...
That was it. So basically, once we put the numbers to it, tell them how much they could do, then they came back and said, we need to do more, we need to expand, which then would require a zoning change.
Yeah.
And so...
I-1, yeah.
So what's the limitation on the cus- this slaughterhouse in A-one?
Per month.
Animal units.
Animal units per month?
Per, no, per week.
Per week?
Per week.
Twenty-five a week?
I believe it's...
I think it depends on the animal.
That was not conditional? You don't have that as a condition of, that you?
That, that is, that's wrote into our regulations, that it, it, it specifies so many animal units.
And it, it depends on the animal, too.
And the animal units could be pigs, it could be chickens.
That's what I...
I think it breaks down...
Animal unit is defined as a cow every one unit, but if it's twenty-five chickens, it's fifty haw- or...
I can't write on that.
Twenty-five haws and fifty chickens, and a half a buffalo, and I forget, there's a, it's a USDA thing that we put in.
And that, yeah, that's where we got our numbers from.
Yeah, but we did it on animal units.
Well, is this copy, please? And if you want...
It should be in there.
Have some work.
It's not even...
I saw it earlier.
Unless it's been added in later on.
Well, the problem is...
Well, in the, so in the scenario, I buy a, I'm just a resident in a subdivision. I buy a cow from John Neal. So then, it's my cow, and it's alive. I have it transported from his farm to Carter Custom Meats in White Pine.
Right.
And I hire them to process my animal.
Right.
At no point is that their meat. That's my meat the whole time.
Right.
Okay.
Well, it's just a service.
It's a service that they're providing. The slaughterhouse, I think, is being proposed, is they want to, farmers could bring their animals to the, sell them to the slaughterhouse, I think.
No.
No?
Well, they were on, the, the whole thing rested upon what the economic threshold was to hire USDA inspector.
Yes.
There's two types on the slaughterhouse. There's a facility inspection, and there's the meat inspection individual animal.
Right.
And they needed to do more than what the, the, uh, limitation was allowed.
To make profit.
Profitable to hire an onsite inspector to do the carcasses.
So I guess in theory, I could just sit there and buy cows from you, take them to a custom slaughterhouse, have the meat produced, and then I could pay a USDA inspector to...
New.
New, 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 new.
There has to be an inspector onsite.
Onsite, the inspector puts a stamp on it. If he don't put a stamp on it, you don't get sex.
Yeah, okay.
That's the whole, that's the whole thing. It has to be, they have to see that animal as able to...
So they have to process enough animals that they can pay for that employee on top of all the other employees that go into it.
In other words, basically, if I was on the end, I had a chance for record, okay, of how many animal units that they actually process.
That's what I was just, well, what I was saying is, you sell your meat to the slaughterhouse, the slaughterhouse would turn around and sell the meat. That's what I thought it was, in a storefront. That's what I was told it was.
The, uh, the fine or, or several people, it might be, plus subject maybe to, uh, city assistance. I don't know what, whatever the court decides at that point in time. We're, we're not very good at that.
There's...
We made lots of rules, but there's nothing, other than slap on the wrist.
And I couldn't remember.
A male bison was a half a unit, so you could actually do forty male bisons in a week's time, right? Cat and bison, feed both, were one, uh...
Well, that would be a state, that would be a state thing.
And of course, if you would do enough chickens, you would do six hundred.
Other, but a deer, if he comes over my fence...
My, my only thing is, it were, we're gonna allow garden centers...
Yeah.
Shoot him.
Yeah.
Cause it's not a domesticated.
Wholesale establish, warehouse, all of that, we're gonna do that without any conditional, without anything that we're saying on there. But we're gonna take value-added and pick it out and make it a conditional use?
I'm, I'm just reading the verbiage, and it's...
A part of our issue, I think, is value-added processing. If you were to just go through the county, what's the first thing somebody thinks that that is? They're gonna think you're talking about a slaughterhouse.
But what I'm saying is...
And I, I, I understand.
Right up here is number five. You've took it out.
As a prohibitive.
Nobody that's come before this board, not one person, that's come before this board, has talked about the rest of the stuff. They don't, they don't ever mention it. The only thing they go to is slaughterhouse meat processing. They go there every time.
Yep. So what's the...
So if you take out the hot button issue, what's the problem with the rest of it?
You're asking the wrong person.
So what is our, what's the definition of value?
She's made more than any of us at the table for being here, so...
That's what...
Definition of value-added agriculture.
No, 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 hold on, Brian. What I mean is, Catherine, do we have a definition for value-added processing in this document?
No, but I think that that's something that we should add in, the one that's on the...
Do we need to recreate the will? We're not the first ones to sit at the table and have this conversation. And I'm sure it's in place in other places where it's... And I'm sure it's in place in other places where it's working.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking for, is a definition.
I started to share it a half an hour ago, but we got sidetracked on that.
Sorry about that.
No, you're good. It's, the Tennessee Department of Agriculture defines value-added business as, and again, this is Department of Agriculture defining the business. "One that uses raw agricultural products to produce products for sale." "The primary source of value-added product must be agricultural products grown on the farm." It doesn't say that track of ground. It says grown on the farm. So if it's Scarlett Farms, if it's Reno Farms, if it's Brooks Farms, it don't say it has to be grown on site. It has to be grown by that farm.
Oh, so I understand that, but I don't think that that helps John Neal with, with his quandary.
But we can take this and maybe strike that from it, and then you've got exactly what you want. Cause it actually highlights a portion previous to that.
Yeah. I think to, to discuss this, we need to, we're gonna have to decide on a definition of it.
But I will say this, and I, I bet my tongue on this for just a few minutes. We've talked about everything else. We're gonna have to do something for agriculture.
I don't disagree.
That is a must, cause it's under attack more than any of these other industries are in our county and in our state right now. And if we don't do something to, to pave a path-
So why-
If you give me this minute, if we don't do something to pave the path for those producers in our county to make a, a profit doing what they're doing. And the lesson in restrictions we've got, it, it's awful, and I'm gonna go back to the processing.
We're killing it, yeah.
It's a shame that you've got to drive an hour-plus to take an animal, get a USDA inspection. And you do it. I mean, that's, that's a lot of doing and stuff. And we could have something like that here. We say it needs to be an industrial. Or press to get a group together that's gonna go in an industrial, buy an industrial piece of property and develop some market processed cattle, or sheep, or ducks, or anything else. I mean, we've had stuff sitting sites ready for building in industrial, and it's been stood away from for quite some time until recently in Jefferson City. And we finally got something coming in. But there was a ton of money sticking to that and it sat vacant for years. We've got, we've got to do something to make an easier path for people who wanted to do what John Neal's talking about possible. Instead of making it harder for them.
Yeah, so you're making it harder for them by putting it in a separate zone. That's what I'm saying. Why wouldn't you just go into the A1 zone and try and add things?
Well, I'm gonna tell you, for me, if this is the only truck leaving-
I don't think that it, it's not.
I want my box on it because the other trucks-
Everybody sitting here has the right to bring this up.
Truck that's left, and it ain't a moving.
Well, why don't you get with the county attorney and have a resolution drawn up to amend A1?
I mean, we had it, and they voted-
Then go back.
Postponed it indefinitely.
John Neal, the only way you get to see me every time is cause I won't stop. You can't let them stop you, John Neal.
Well, I tried for two years.
Well, why don't-
Ease up on the restrictions. You can't just give up on it.
Why don't we get a, why don't we get a copy of that, whatever you've run up the flagpole before, and see if we can't meld, meld this into language that everybody's comfortable with. Uh, and if it's a conditional use, one, one thing that even planners are reluctant to tell people this. If you meet the conditions, the BZA can't turn it down legally. If you enumerate a set of conditions, uh, and the BZA, it's a conditional use, and the BZA is charged with approving or disapproving that, if the applicant meets the conditions, it's done. But set those conditions how, how you want them. Uh, that there's some sort of treat, system to treat, um, the affluent, that, uh, you've got bigger setbacks, that you've got a requirement for buffers. Uh, what's, what's the stuff in here? See if there's anything we can use in there.
Let me ask this question, as, as you look at that. You said get the language that we had already tried to move through with A2. Are you wanting to try A2 again? Are you wanting to take some of the language from A2 and put it in C3?
Why do-
Let me finish. If we got a bad problem interrupting, and forgive me, but that's about the tenth time tonight. Or are we wanting to go back and take that, some of that language and put it in A1? I mean, wha- what are you recommending?
Okay, first, at this point, I honestly don't know. But I think we get the language right and then determine where we wanna put it. And that may be in A1, that may be in C3.
A2.
Uh, I don't know why you would have to create an A2 district necessarily.
Well, if they're just waiting for A1, they wouldn't-
It sounds like the function that we're talking about would, from my perspective, work nicely as a conditional and not have to create another zone district. I mean, you're talking about A2, a C3. You could get too many zone districts. But if you, if you word it right and you, um, you charge the BZA with determining compliance of the additional set of criteria, um, I think you've got something that everybody could live with. If you get the criteria, if everyone is comfortable with the additional criteria. This kinda gives me pause, um, the way this is written, but, um, so let's do this one correctly. Not that this is incorrect, but let's do it so you've got a, a conditional use that-
I love that answer. I absolutely do.
Well, once again, you've got additional set of criteria for something that's permitted. And who's determining compliance? And you're saying your zoning office, but you don't have a zoning officer that goes out and looks at this stuff necessarily.
Can we get one of them while we're getting this?
But we also have other things that, that falls into as well. Let's say we have a campground, and they're supposed to say twenty-nine days. Out there, see what I'm saying? We create things that sometimes are impossible to enforce.
I agree with that, but something like, uh, you have to come and, and give us a site plan that shows how you're gonna, uh, address the affluent leaving the property line.
Yes, you do.
That's a very set thing. That can be included in the site plan. The location, the methodology, the sign-off by your county health official. Uh, I'm not a big believer in, in, uh, adding language that you can enforce. But now, keep in mind, the next item on the agenda-
Yes.
Is the certificate of compliance.
Yes.
That, so we got a couple of chicken and egg things going on here that, uh, you're asking, like this engineer that brought the RV park?
Yes.
If and when you approve that, uh, he's gonna have to, not unless this is adopted. He would have to come back in and fill out this form and certify that that commercial site was built according to this plan. He put his seal on it, and he puts his seal on this form.
Yes, okay.
So start looking at teeth that is reasonable and doable.
Okay, and I'm not sure if this is, is an appropriate way to do some of these things, but let's say, for instance, some of the things that we have here, we know that they need to be in compliance on, that are, that are hard to monitor. To put some teeth into that, could the county commission require them to have a permit to operate that type of business based upon that? And then if they're found not to be in compliance, that that could actually lose their permit and opportunity to do a business?
Well, let me ask you, does, um, when you set up a, um, a process of this nature, is there a TDEC inspection?
Process of what nature?
A value-add, like if you, let's go to your tomato.
If you're selling a food product-
Yeah.
You've got USDA inspectors, you've got TDEC, you've got, I mean, you gotta be all the requirements.
And those have, those licenses, I assume that they give you a license, those permits. And those permits, you could write in there, those permits have to be on file and renewed every year in your zoning office.
You gotta have, like, if I wanted to, a milling operation for grain or wheat or whatever, I'd have to have a milling license or a feed, feed license.
So once again, your conditional use would be that prior to initiating an operation, you have to present to your zoning or office that license authorized by USDA, TDEC, whoever it is. It's just like, um, uh, these, i-if, um, TDEC's gotta give, you know, TDOT on any state route, you can't access TDOT's right-of-way. You have to have a permit to do that. So whether, uh, one of your site plan requirements is, before we issue the building permit, you give us your TDEC permit. I put in there you have to have a SWIP, um, and the guy's got it. It takes about six months to get a SWIP, so that's how long they've been working on that. But that SWIP has to be on file in your office before you issue a permit for the action.
Okay. So earlier, when we were having a conversation in here with the people, the gentleman here represented the RV park, one of the stipulations of us in there is that they had to have a license by the state, and I knew that, okay? All right. So in the state licensing there, there are guidelines of how you're supposed to operate a, an RV site. And basically, it's supposed to be short-term rental, is it not? Uh, am I correct in that? When you get your, when you get, when you get that license, is that not part of it?
No, in your county, um, I met with your, another committee of your county today-
Yes.
Uh, at lunch to adopt a-
Public service.
Yeah, public service.
Yeah.
To adopt a, um, special permitting process for short-term rental.
Yeah, that's for short-term rental. But I'm talking about an RV park. So it comes, okay, because an RV park, basically now under our new guidelines, twenty-nine days. But I have RV parks here where people just, that's-
They live there. They live there.
I don't think that's what it was designed for, so what I wanna know is, is that, is the permit that they get from the state, as far as that go, allow that type of usage? And if it doesn't, are they in violation and can that permit be pulled? Which then would make them have to come in compliance.
You mean like the ones that are grandfathered in, has their thing?
The ones that are just, you might as well just say are glorified, okay? Uh, I mean, to the, to the extent that people have built two-story houses on their site, okay? So that was my question.
That's another thing we should have had him put on.
May I ask you a question, too? The state has to issue that license or that permit. Regardless, if you have zoning or planning in your-
They do, yes.
Okay. I'll speak to that in Grand River County. There is a really nice one just been built, and it's yearly rentals.
Yes.
And that's permissible. It was developed with that in mind, and the state issued that license to them to be able to do so.
I guess that answered my question, yeah.
One thing, in state parks, they have, now, we're way off value-added processing. That's another topic.
We're way in the weeds now.
Yeah.
Uh, we need to get back on track, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I just take that right-
But I, I will say this.
I was just thinking, some of these things, if there was a permitting process to keep people in compliance, if you knew you were gonna lose your ability to make income on your investment because you don't stay in compliance.
Um, I have seen communities, um, issue a, a yearly permit, and they require the individual to come in and sign an affidavit that they're XYZ. Um, I swear that I'm doing XYZ, or I'm not doing XYZ. And that affidavit has to be renewed every year. Um, now, whether you, you know, whether you wanna go that far or not, I don't know. I think one thing with the short-term rental was, the discussion today was to establish revenue, a revenue stream dedicated to hiring staff to better police the county.
Yes.
Um, so there would be staff to-
Yes.
Maybe some of this stuff will change in the future.
Yes, I agree.
But it's a chicken and egg thing. It's like this, cause you don't have staff adopting this, and it's someday, you may not need this.
So, okay.
I'm, I'm gonna make a motion.
I'm looking for one.
I'm gonna postpone this until our next meeting, to get that language.
Did you wanna defer it?
No, I want to postpone it.
As long as he doesn't table it. Table it kills it.
I can table it if you want me to.
Don't really make a difference at this point.
Do that.
I think there's something there. I really do. I swear, I think we're so close.
But I think you, you know, I'd like-
But, uh, as Catherine said, we need the language. So we postpone this until the next meeting.
And I'll say-
And let's look at the, let's look at the language.
We have a motion. The second, do we have any further discussion about this?
Can I, can I say something about his motion? Um, let's get the language and then decide where we wanna put it. Let's get the language first.
That's what I'm saying. Postpone this until our next meeting. Get the language. Let's take this back out.
Okay, yeah, goodly made. I wouldn't-
Any further discussion? All those in favor of postponing this till the next meeting, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Moving on down the agenda.
We're gonna let you efficient tonight.
I'm telling you, we're, we're gonna have the whole alphabet for us over. Item H, Discussion of Land Use Plan, Possible Rezoning of Jefferson County.
I'm gonna motion postpone this until after the hour.
We have a motion.
I'll say-
We have a second. We have the business.
I thought we were-
I want, I want to say it'd be under other business, would it not?
Yeah, I want, I want, I'm just taking action.
Okay, so we're still gonna do, okay.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just getting this out of the-
Okay, fine.
This is land use plan.
I thought that was on the agenda.
It is under other business. It, it is. If we, we got a motion in a second, do we have any further discussion? Being none, all in favor of postponing discussion of land use plan and possible rezoning of Jefferson County to the next meeting, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
All of opposed? Item number seven, other business. I can, and this is, comes up in other business first. I would like for us to decide if we're gonna need to meet in December 24th of 2024. Do we need to reschedule that? Do we need to cancel it? What would the pleasure of the board be?
Can we just push to January?
Mr. Chairman, that's, yeah, if you're gonna make that as a motion.
Uh, I move to skip the December meeting.
Okay, so we're gonna cancel the December meeting and take backup again in January.
Correct.
Okay, we have proper motion. Do we have a second?
Second on that one.
Okay, we have a second.
Start with that one.
Any further discussion?
Aye.
All those in favor of canceling the December 24th meeting, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
All of opposed? Moving on to other business.
I knew we'd find something to agree on.
Yeah. I just, I, I like this. I think, I like, I wish we could just take, can we take action on this tonight?
Well, like, this is a, this is just the form. This is the actual language that would go in. So this is a zoning amendment.
So we would have to have BMA approval on this. On subdivision, it's BMA, correct?
It would be-
It would be zoning, so BMA would have to approve it. If it was subdivision, we could just do it ourselves, correct?
Your county commission is what you're talking about.
BMA, oh.
BMA, county commission.
CLB?
I had that on my brain from last night.
I thought you were saying board of officers. I was thinking whether you just validate.
Does he mean board or some of the appeals connect?
So because it does record new site plans, which is zoning, we would need to have, have this to, it'd have to go before the, uh-
So we make the recommendation of the county commission?
Only thing I was hoping was that we could do that and make that recommendation so it could be on your January agenda to get it implemented, example.
Why couldn't we?
Like there's any problem.
Okay.
Have y'all read it?
You like it?
I've read this, yes.
Have you read this?
Yes, yes.
Cause you're establishing new permitting.
You made the corrections that one and a half and above that we talked about, isn't that right, correct?
Yeah, it's, uh, under C, temporary occupancy, the building officials shall set the amount of surety based on-
Four, five corrections.
Yeah, yeah. I think I made all those.
Okay, I read it, and I'm happy with it. It's passed due.
You making that motion?
Yes. I will make the motion.
To recommend the county commission at-
Certificate of Compliance and, and that the guidelines to amend the Jefferson County zoning regulations and, but this also needs to be subdivision regulations.
Um, I have in here is the last thing, but it was a note to myself. Amend the subrigs to require as-built drawings for roadway and utility construction. Uh, and a certificate of compliance by the engineer for roadway construction utilities. That would go into your subrigs and that's, um, that would be different, so.
The one other thing I want in there is drainage. Can we, can we also put drainage in there?
Sure.
Okay.
You're talking about-
That's the tough one, okay? Uh, we, we can, we can go to utility companies and, and their engineer says, "Hey, we're good with this." We can go to electric company, they say we're good. We, we can, we can go to utility companies and, and their engineer says, hey, we're good with this. We can go electric company, they say we're good with this. But we don't have any way to go to for the drainage.
So do you have, are you talking about detention, or are you talking about?
I'm talking about anything that's designed, as far as that goes, that needs to be designed, that when it's, once it's built, that it was built the way it was designed. That's why I worked for, for, for that.
Yeah. I mean, that would fall under the as-built. Now, keep in mind that only as, an engineer can certify capacity.
And that's who I think.
In the state of Tennessee.
And that's who I think that.
Okay, so that's at your preliminary plat stage, and then at the end, pursuant to the final plat, prior to releasing the bond and recommending acceptance of roadway, that's when you would get it.
Yes.
So that's, we got to write that up. I don't have, I haven't written anything on that.
Okay.
That's a, that's your subregs.
So do I need to wait till you get that written in?
Well, could we?
Absolutely.
Could we go ahead and send this on so it can go before county commission in January?
Yeah.
Do you need?
This is a zoning amendment. He's talking about a subreg amendment.
Well, this body here can do the subregs, is that not correct?
Yeah.
Uh, I just didn't know if I needed, if I made a motion that I needed to do it as a subreg, or this body can take action here for the subdivision regulation.
The language and the numbers are going to be different.
Okay. She's got the thing, we can amend the end of this thing when we present it.
Now that's crystal clear.
Okay. Sounds good to me.
I'll draft that for you.
Okay, so that was, so that's my motion to adopt this.
I'll second.
Yes. Okay, we have a second. Any further discussion?
Well, we're recommending the county commission.
Well, yes, as a recommendation.
Yeah.
But we can adopt it in our subregs already.
You can. Approve all those amendments to the subreg dress with the planning commission.
Can we address that separately?
Do we need to, we need to sue two separate motions, one's to recommend this on the county commission, and then one to adopt it into our subregs.
Okay.
So I may need to amend, I may have mentioned subregs, so this one will just be basically to amend the, uh, recommendations or amend the, the zoning regulations for Jefferson County to, for compliance and, uh, the guidelines for compliance.
You're making that recommendation to county commission?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. I amended my motion, I took out subdivisions.
And I'll be, I'll second, and I'll agree to it.
So we got a second to the amendment.
Well, no, I agree with the amendment, so we're.
Okay.
Yeah.
You agree, okay.
So we're okay.
So, okay, so all those know what they're voting for right now, right? Everybody knows.
I'm pretty close, yeah.
Okay. All those in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Oh, I stepped in, I didn't hear you. I'm sorry. Forgive me. Terry's going to get with you and write that down, so we're done. And Austin is going to stay there too, to make sure he agreed on it.
You need to make the, make the one for the subregs.
Yes. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that, uh, to amend subdivision regulations for the, uh, for, uh, Jefferson County Regional Planning Commission to adopt a certificate of compliance to follow, okay, I'm sorry.
To amend the subregs? I didn't think you were serious. Uh, if you want. You got to have a public hearing with 30 days' notice. You can't amend your subregs.
We can't do that, then. We need a public hearing of that, yeah. So we will put out 30 days' notice for January meeting then?
That's sound. Do we want to go ahead and put that in the form of a motion, so it's an amendment?
Once again, I, I have to draft language for that.
Right.
And it may not be exactly like this. It will be very different fact.
Yes, that's fine. As long as you address all your motion draws, I will, I will draw, we'll draw.
You can make a motion to direct me to do that, present in January language. We can hold a public hearing on it. I, I, I'd kind of been reluctant to do a public hearing till you get your language done.
That's fine. I understand.
You know, because it's a, I mean, that's a.
Make a motion to move that you have the language prepared for the January meeting.
Perfect.
And we go ahead and have.
I'm looking for that.
Yeah, so.
Got it. Several, okay.
So we've got three seconds in that. Can we go ahead and schedule the public hearing for January as well?
Let's postpone this first.
Okay, okay. You can't schedule a public hearing until she gets.
Yes, we got to have the language and then 30 days' notice.
Okay.
So we're looking at February on this.
I got you.
On that, so, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, I, I'm, I'll go ahead.
Okay, okay. All those in favor of having Ms. Bowel want to have the language prepared for the January meeting for our subregs for us to look at and recommend for a public meeting, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All of opposed? State that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Now, what do you want to say?
Because I'm sure it takes back scheduling the meeting then. We can't schedule that meeting till.
Right, because it has to be specific as to what you're amending and what sections, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, I will have to look in your subregs and see where that language will go. And it, but it's not, I mean, it's not, that's not a big lift. This is a much heavier lift than in your zoning ordinance to do this than what you're talking about. And, and the engineers will love it. It gives them work.
It does, they get it, but.
Yeah.
The developer won't like it. I'm looking for a motion.
Second.
Motion second, all of in favor, you can stand up. Likewise, keep your seat.